Back to open session after a closed session. And we will start with trustee Lang Walter introducing the person who will lead us on the pledge of allegiance.
All right. Thank you, President Brashov. We're not going to do roll call first? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing someone to lead us in the pledge. Cynthia, would you go ahead and come up to the podium for us? So this is Cynthia White, and I wanted to welcome her tonight to lead us in the pledge. Cynthia will be graduating from La Mirada High this year after completing her K through 12 education in La Mirada Schools. She says her favorite part of high school has been AP classes. She stated that AP classes have challenged me academically and helped me learn subjects in more depth, as well as preparing me for the rigor of college. And if you want to be impressed, over a dozen of these classes she has completed. Yes, certainly has bragging rights. And to name a few, Eurohistory, US History, Biology, Chemistry, Calculus AB, Calculus BC, Literature, Language, Government, Econ. And I'm not sure if I got all of them. Anyway, quite an accomplishment. Cynthia completed all of these while also finishing four years of foreign language through Surritos College in the dual enrollment program and her other high school classes. All of these units will elevate your class standing when you do enter matriculate at college. There's a bit about, that's a bit about Cynthia inside the classroom. Now I'd like to tell you about her service to the community. Cynthia has served on the Board of MSA, Matador Scholarship Association. This is her second year as president of La Mirada High School Key Club. That's the student club that's affiliated with Kiwanis, as most of you know, a service organization. And one of her favorite parts of that role is meeting students from other key clubs in the area, helping with Kiwanis events, and the interesting people she gets to meet as a result of her involvement. Last year at this time, Cynthia was also named as Key Club President for the month in our region. Well, if you think this student is only about work and service, you would be wrong. This year, she's been the captain and the quarterback of La Mirada High's girls' football, flag football team. Woo! Yeah. And I think that's actually been more than just this year. She has enjoyed watching this sport gain popularity and actually has seen it grow on La Mirada High campus, on the field and off, over the past three years. Cynthia shared with me that she enjoyed discovering her strengths and learning the game along with her teammates. Because the sport is so new at the high school, Cynthia said that there is less pressure because all of them were learning the game together. You know, football has a lot of little complexities to it, and that discovering her strengths for the various positions was really, really interesting and fun. As far as where Cynthia sees herself in a year or more, she has a passion for problem solving. This passion has fueled her interest in the field of engineering. She's interested in how things work and how to find solutions to real problems that affect people. She's most drawn to civil engineering and biomedical engineering and wants to learn more about both specialties before narrowing her field of study. Just recently, she returned from visits to UC Berkeley and UC Davis, checking out their engineering programs and campus culture, trying to find the right fit for her. As you can tell, Cynthia doesn't have a lot of free time. But when she does, her favorite thing is to meet up with friends, grab something to eat or go shopping together. But the location's not actually that important. It's mostly what she values the most is the conversations that occur. Just a few weeks ago, Cynthia was honored by her peers when she was chosen as one of the La Mirada High Homecoming Court. And I actually got to see it. I was there that night. So I want to acknowledge the support that your family has given you. I know that students really need that, and your family is very much behind you, that has helped you to achieve this moment. We commend you for your hard work. We encourage you to continue to strive for excellence in your education, your service to others, and in everything you do. So we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may sit. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Dr. Consio was able to join us for closed session but wasn't able to accompany us for open session. So just briefly, there are no actions taken by the Board in closed session. Item four, the minutes for October 27, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We also want to remember that, sorry, adoption for the agenda for this meeting. Item B, we will be closing in memory of Frank Medina, father of district office senior custodian, Frank Medina Jr., Ms. Deborah Moss, retired Nutrition Services Lead One, and Ms. Laura Williams, former Norwalk La Mirada teacher and past TANLA president. Can I get a motion?
A second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. This time, we have opportunity for citizens to address the Board on matters within the purview of the Board. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. My apologies. We did have an action item enclosed. The Board of Education took action during closed session at its meeting held on November 17, 2025 by a vote of 6-0-1, 6-4-0 against 1 abstention, to approve a resignation agreement and general release with employee number 12640. Agreement is a mutual release of claims and allows employee to retire effective February 1, 2026 on motion by Ms. Norma Mesqua, seconded by Ms. S. B. Free. Motion carried 6-0-1. That is the only action taken by the Board. Thank you. And now back to public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And we'll start with Ms. Natalia Valdez.
So President Brashov, Vice President Dr. Consio, and here, board members, Dr. Baker. I'm here to speak on behalf of Kelly Lamontilla, a special education teacher at Norwalk High School. Kelly has been teaching in LNU for 37 years. She's unable to be here because she's attending a funeral for the parents of one of her students. Kelly teaches a fast class that is designated for moderate to severely disabled students. To say that she's having a rough year would be an understatement. At the end of last year, Norwalk High was informed that they did not have a number, the number of students should justify having three fast classes, and one class would be collapsed. Immediately, teachers and site administrators met to discuss the challenges this class collapse would bring. They knew a few students who did not belong in the same classroom, but they have similar designation, so there would be no choice to collapse the third class. Here's a look at Kelly's class this year. She has a total of 11 students. Seven students have behavior plans that require data collection. Students wear pull-ups, are bottle-fed, snack lunch must be blended. One student elopes leaving class and at times entering other classrooms or trying to leave campus altogether. All students require assistance with using the restroom. All this occurs while Ms. Lamontilla is trying to educate her students. Is it okay if she goes next in her own three minutes?
Yeah, I'll go right next. Yeah, I want to give you your full, I want to give you your full three minutes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. As far as staffing, Ms. Lamontilla has two students have one-to-one aides.
I'm sorry, just reset the time so she has a full three minutes. Thanks.
Okay. She has attempted to get one-on-one aides for two other students, including those that need to be hand-fed or those who have extremely aggressive behavior. While this sounds like plenty of adults to help with 11 students, it really is not. She and her aides deal with daily outbursts and aggressive behaviors to the point where they all feel emotionally and physically exhausted. Two students who trigger aggressive behavior in each other are Student A and Student B. Student B, when he or she gets triggered by Student A, he grabs, kicks, pulls hair, and does whatever to get away from others. Kelly and her aides have been left bruised and scarred. Remember, these students are not acting out maliciously. It's just a behavior as an expression of their disability. Another couple of students get upset. They flipped the large, heavy science desks, broken three tables this year, chairs have been thrown at staff. And each time there's a disturbance, the class must be evacuated. Administration must come to the classroom to assist in calming the situation. Again, all of this is while Kelly is trying to teach. She says that she and our site administrators have worked together very well, but she does not feel fully supported by the district level. So she's attempted to get help. On October 23, no, sorry, October 24, Patrice Dodd came and observed her class. They were set to have a follow-up meeting for either November 3 or 4. Kelly provided the time she was available on both days, but heard nothing. November 4 came and went. Last week, Kelly got an email saying the next date Ms. Dodd was able to meet is December 10. That's a full six weeks after the classroom observation. This is not acceptable because in the meantime, students, aides, and Ms. Lamontilla are left physically and emotionally, in a physically and emotionally unsafe environment. Again, the district administrator came in October 24, but the follow-up is not until December 10. That's a full six weeks. She notes that all of our district special ed, district-level special ed leaders are new within the past two years, and she doesn't have the same relationship with them that she's had with administrators in the past. So I want to reiterate that our site administration has been very helpful, but the district is only seeing numbers, not the people. So yes, she is only, we're only technically allowed to have two classes, but the behaviors are so large. I want to leave with a quote from Kelly. "These incidents have made me very anxious and I feel unsafe. There are not enough eyes or bodies to support students and staff safety. As educators, and many of us as parents, I think we can all agree that students and staff safety is a priority."
Thank you. Ms. Felicia Sandoval?
School Board, superintendents, and most of all, my esteemed colleagues who are here tonight. I'm a teacher at Dahland Elementary, one of the schools recognized just recently by the US News and World Report, ranked by them as a top school in the state of California. With $65 million in reserves, you would think that our district and school board would do everything it can to preserve and retain the level of teaching that receives this type of public recognition and acknowledgement of what we do and the dedication that we give year after year after year. And yet, once again, teachers are here, coming together to demand their fair share. One would think that by now, it would be a foregone conclusion that we should be fairly compensated for what we do. We don't just teach students, we create citizens. We don't just provide structure and stability, we have become their structure and stability. We don't just push them to reach their greatest potential, we help them realize their greatest potential. The young lady sitting right here. We don't just provide them with a safe space to learn and grow and be themselves. Our classrooms are their safe space, and we are their safe people. So if the US News and World Report recognizes schools for their positive contribution to society, just remember that this publication lists the number of teachers at each school site, not administrators, not school board members, not superintendents or assistant supes, who work at these schools, who work with students, who educate minds and provide stability. Know that the best kind of recognition is for you to come and see what we do in our classrooms. How many of you have visited classrooms in the new school year? Zero school board members have visited mine this year. Only one visited my class last spring, and before then, I cannot remember when the last one came to my room. Rather than reward administrators with bloated salaries and bonuses for having almost no impact on our classrooms, how about rewarding teachers with decent salaries and healthcare benefits so that we may continue to be the reason for all the accolades that this district receives? Unity, respect, recognition. 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 I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Coggins?
I hope I don't have to follow that. Hi, y'all. Hi, I'm Lori Coggins. And you might be saying I look familiar because I was here last month, too. Go figure. Anyway, I brought some props. These are a few of the things I'd like to talk about tonight. First of all, COLA. Secondly, the money we have in reserve, and salary inequity. So I have a few notes here. I'd like to start with a friendly public service announcement that COLA stands for cost of living. It is not a raise. It is given to you by the state to pass on to your teachers. And when you don't do that, it's demoralizing to us and all employees. Negotiating our contract each year does not have to be a toxic process. But it's difficult for teachers to assume your good intentions when each year, we have to fight for our COLA. I remember the days many years ago when Wayne Shannon was here, and I didn't have to find myself picketing every year to get my COLA. Secondly, the money in reserve. $65 million in our reserve tank and $10 million in our Fund 40 is excessive. I have a good question for you. How many years have we had to shave off money from the funding of students and teachers in front of us for that year to hoard that amount of money away? That money should be spent on the students and teachers and staff that are in front of you each year. It's embarrassing, actually. And in the true spirit of engagement, I brought some props. This came about, this little game I have here, came about because a few weeks ago, I was working the Harvest Festival after hours, and I was speaking with one of my colleagues who is a non-credential, classified employee who works full-time. And we were looking at the note we got from TANLA, which stated the salaries and the increases that our administrators got. And we looked at it saying, whoa, one of them is making as much in a month as, almost as much as you make in a year. And this person impacts teachers, or I'm sorry, impacts students directly every day. So I have a little game called What's the Difference? These are people that stay at the district office, and these are people that touch student lives every day. What's the difference between an assistant soup of business services and an elementary school secretary each year? $2,000, $208,000, and pretty close to $200,000. Anyway, assistant superintendent of ed services and the senior custodian difference is $206,376. Our assistant soup of HR and the school safety officer have a difference of $201,300 every year. And the difference between our superintendent, that has the same number of years in our district, as a classroom teacher with a master's degree and a PhD, is $230,796. That's obscene. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Brian O'Leary?
President Brashov, and if Vice President Dr. Consio is listening, school board members, Dr. Baker, and guests. My name is Brian O'Leary, and I've been a teacher for 25 years. I work as a French teacher and ELD, oh, sorry, I should have drank some water, and ELD teacher at Norwalk High School. I'd like to bring out one positive and one concern. My positive. At our eighth-grade orientation at Norwalk High, we had a strong turnout of parents and students. What really stood out is how many families were already asking about college readiness, especially about the California State Seal of Biliteracy, and what their children need to qualify for UC and CSU admission. It was inspiring to see parents prioritizing multilingualism and future university opportunities. Their questions made it clear that our community values languages, values options, and wants their children to have every door open. My concern, my concern is that our current graduation requirements, sorry, do not align with what our families want for their children, nor with A through G expectations for UC and CSU admission. Right now, juniors are often scheduled into three years of science, which is excellent, but they lose access to a second or third year of world languages because our graduation requirements only require one year of world language or fine arts. So we're losing access for students in the third year of world languages, which affects numbers in AP courses in world languages, which have dropped from almost a dozen to ones in Spanish. The result is that students who dream of becoming engineers, nurses, teachers, or business majors, all of whom need to meet A through G world requirements, are unintentionally being blocked from the very pathways their families are asking about. My mouth is so dry. This mismatch between graduation requirements and actual college entry requirements is creating a two-tiered system. One path, oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. One path that leads to four-year university eligibility, and another path that quietly closes those doors. Our community is asking for access. Our students need alignment, and our graduation requirements can be updated to reflect the future our families believe in. I'm asking the Board to reexamine the graduation requirements so that science excellence and world language access are both possible instead of one excluding the other. We want our students' future to expand, not narrow because of our schedule. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Ms. Maureen Kidos Gray?
Good evening, President Brashov, school board members, superintendent Dr. Baker, administrators, colleagues, and guests. Tonight, I want to address concerns related to the superintendent's communication and the rollout of district's goals tonight. In the recent school board communication, the superintendent referenced work being done by we for this study session. However, I want to clarify that the union was not involved in developing any of this. We were given a preview after the fact, but there has been no collaboration, no opportunity for discussion, and no union input in shaping what's presented today. When the district speaks about we, it should reflect a truly collaborative process that includes the educators who carry out this work every day. So it leaves the question about who is included in the we. I also want to express concern about the accuracy of the data being presented tonight. Some of the information presented does not align with what is actually happening at school sites. For example, the district has not administered the DRA district-wide for several years, yet DRA results were included as if they were current. At the elementary level, the reading data being presented comes from only initial screenings at the very beginning of the school year. We have no updated data because we do not operate on a quarter system. The trimester just ended recently. This data presentation also raises a very important question. How is it that the district developed goals and they were created before reviewing any accurate or current data? Why were so many committees and work stopped without looking at data? Effective goals must be grounded in reality, not assumptions. And once goals are shared, our educators expect to see an action plan that outlines how the district intends to reach them. At this time, we are still waiting to see any actionable steps, timelines, or structures to support the goals that were announced at the beginning of the school year. Our teachers are committed to helping students succeed. We always have been. But to do that effectively, we need accurate data, transparency about how decisions are made, and genuine collaboration from the beginning of the process, not after decisions are finalized. TANLA remains ready to work together, but collaboration must be real. It must include the voices of the professionals who stand day in and day out and know the needs of our students in our classrooms, as you see many of them in this room. Our hope is that moving forward, the district will engage us early, use reliable data, and communicate clear action steps so that the goals can truly lead to meaningful improvement for our students. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Ms. Martha Hauregui?
Good evening, Board President Brashov, Dr. Consio, Superintendent Dr. Baker, Board members, and guests. I'm going to second what my colleague just said, Maureen Kidos. I will, I will agree with what she just said in regards to the data. We had a meeting. I had my separate meeting, and my meeting was just a very vague and very lack of communication and transparency. The agenda was shown and talked about a variety of items with curriculum. Then it talked about attendance and also safety. My focus was about declining enrollment, attendance, absenteeism, because that's what I look at. Not to mention also the Ds and the Fs, the credits, the three years of data that they were supposed, are supposed to present upon you with current data. I was also provided a briefing on ORENA data that was given two years ago. Again, very vague information, lack of communication, and lack of transparency. I should have been provided with the same data that is going to be provided upon you tonight, and I wasn't, just like my colleague said. There is no transparency. If we are leaders, we are to work as leaders, and we are to work together, having communication with 100% transparency as stated in the 90-day plan that was presented at the beginning of the school year. We have yet to receive that. On top of that, you also have the ninth graders, at least one D and one F, that is on the presentation. So out of the 685 students enrolled, 30 are
Good evening, Board President Brashov, Dr. Conseil, Superintendent Dr. Baker, board members, and guests. I'm going to second what my colleague just said, Maureen Kidos. I will, I will agree with what she just said in regards to the data. We had a meeting, I had my separate meeting, and my meeting was just a very vague and very lack of communication and transparency. The agenda was shown and talked about a variety of items with curriculum. Then it talked about attendance and also safety. My focus was about declining enrollment, attendance, absenteeism, because that's what I look at. Not to mention also the Ds and the Fs, the credits, the three years of data that they were supposed, are supposed to present upon you with current data. I was also provided a briefing on Orinda data that was given two years ago. Again, very vague information, lack of communication, and lack of transparency. I should have been provided with the same data that is going to be provided upon you tonight, and I wasn't, just like my colleague said. There is no transparency. If we are leaders, we are to work as leaders and we are to work together, having communication with 100% transparency as stated in the 90-day plan that was presented at the beginning of the school year. We have yet to receive that. On top of that, you also have the ninth graders, at least one D and one F, that is on the presentation. So out of the 685 students enrolled, 30 are, 38 are independent study. Isn't it important to also track this data from alternative education? For example, in the ninth grade Ds and Fs, data, data excludes ninth graders who are independent study, alternative ed. Alternative ed doesn't enter quarter grades into power school. Everything is done manually. So as you can see, I went in there and did my own research for ninth, John Glenn High School because that's where I work. And with the numbers, they were off by one number. It said 89 out of 149, it was 90 out of 149. So that was my little research that I did. I also want to share with you that I've been very patient and really asking every month as I have standing meetings with Dr. Baker and Dr. Goddall, asking when are we going to be having our superintendent's cabinet? The response that I get time and time again is, we will get back to you, I'm working on it, we will have that information. I have now been forced to submit a request for necessary and relevant information. And part of it is the local control and accountability plan budget for '24, '25, and[670.32][670.32]'25, '26. This is very concerning to CSEA as various classified positions are budgeted and allocated to pay their salaries, such as IT, the ITSTs and other classified positions. And since this information is not being provided so that we meet our timelines with LACO and presentations with all stakeholders, I have to, had to submit this information for transparency and communication. Thank you.
I believe we have one person online.
President Brashov, we're going to check to see if she's in the room. Do you have a card for Carrie Vaughn?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I do. It was stuck between it, my bad. Yes, Carrie Vaughn, and then the person online, if you can try to get ahold of her. Yes, thank you for reminding me. Carrie.
Good evening, everyone. My students call me Ms. Vaughn. I'm a 20-year veteran of this district, proudly serving the students at John Glenn High School and Southeast Academy. I'm here on behalf of my colleagues and students who couldn't attend to raise concerns we believe this board needs to address. First, I want to recognize progress. The situation involving the Southeast Academy's secretary has been resolved, but we're still missing a secretary at John Glenn High School, and we're looking forward to the district filling that position as soon as possible. Next, on behalf of my students, I'm asking the board to support the replacement of our campus lockers. They appear to be original to the 1970s, and their condition reflects that. Students deserve a campus that makes them feel proud, not discouraged. Broken, dilapidated lockers are an eyesore to everyone on campus, and updating them would certainly boost student morale, especially since our students do use them daily, if they even work. Again, I would like to readdress my deep concern that district-wide collaboration is no longer a priority for this superintendent. She has claimed that teachers belong in the classroom. And while I understand this sentiment, it is also true that for the past decade, these structured days with my district PLC team have been essential to maintaining consistency across schools and grade levels. Don't we want that? These meetings supported curriculum alignment, we shared resources, and provided mentorship for new teachers. Without district-organized collaboration time, teachers are scrambling to plan their own meeting dates because we understand that the loss of this structure risks returning us to this organized state of 2010s, and I hate to see us regress back to that place. As you already know, we have been analyzing our school data for as long as I've worked in this district, working to identify our growth as well as our student needs year after year. I don't understand why the superintendent feels the need to do this massive data analysis where she could have just asked us. I'm 100% certain that we all know what her mega-data tells us. In fact, if you're interested, I can tell you what's wrong with John Glenn High School and Southeast Academy. I can tell you what we need to improve. And it starts with adequate staffing, time for collaboration, and organization at the district level that coordinates the work at each site. We had that system in place, you guys. It was working. But Dr. Baker decided it had to go. I'm also troubled by the superintendent's videos that she likes to post during her message to you guys, celebrating district programs such as the honor band, art showcase, robotics competitions, and STEM nights, events that were effectively canceled due to Dr. Baker's staffing decisions. And that feels super misleading and deceptive because you are literally taking credit for something you had no part in and are single-handedly canceling these programs for the foreseeable future. There's no planned robotics competitions. How do we bring kids to this district when we don't have these programs anymore? We can't even show up. How many, how long are you going to use these pictures of outdated graduated students? Removing, I'm sorry, let me get back. The work of the TOSSAs who sustain, sustain these programs and traditions were clearly not considered, and removing them without a plan for continuity disrespects the culture and progress of this district. It turns out that two administrators cannot replace the collective work of the TOSSAs who've been sent back to the classroom. It simply isn't feasible.
If you can wrap it up.
I will. I urge the board to reconsider the elimination of the TOSA positions. Improvement requires planning, not dismantling systems that work. 10 years of progress have been discarded without a clear explanation. As long as district-level PLC structures are removed and no replacement exists, I will continue voicing my concerns. And if you can't tell, I love my job. Dr. Baker, destroying an effective system without offering a better alternative is not leadership, it's ego. It jeopardizes everything we've worked so hard for here. I've expected better of you. And, school board, I expect you to hold her accountable for these failures. Thank you.
Is the person online available?
They did not join. They did not join online.
They did not join online, okay. Thank you. That concludes our public comments section, and we will proceed to the board study session. Dr. Baker?
Okay, we're going to transition, so we'll need just a couple minutes for the team to get the presentation up. And then I'm going to ask the team members who are going to be presenting to go ahead and take your place closer to the microphone, just for the sake of time.
Okay, so we'll take a, like, five-minute break.
Members of the community, thank you for giving us the opportunity to review our data. You have in front of you, board members, the attachments that are online for the public that were posted on Friday. So there are three items you have in your binders, and the public has this available as well. The first item you have is a memo that I wrote on Friday or last week, and that pretty much gives you an overview of items that I'm going to kind of touch on today. And the second item you have in your binder, and again, members of the public have this as well, is what's called a technical guide. A lot of times, folks look at data and they make assumptions about what it means. It's really important to read the business rules around what the data point means that you're referring to, so that if we were able to, for example, think about IEP data, it's not necessarily all the IEPs that were actually held, it's the number that may have been due that were actually held versus those that are not. Those are important points because if you are not looking at the technical guide, you may not understand how things are calculated. So I really want to invite folks to do that in your spare time or to ask us questions if you have those. But the technical guide basically defines what the data point means, what it does not mean, how it was calculated. That's very, very important as we go through this. The third item that you all have in front of you, as well as the public, is, are the actual slides. Now, what we're going to be presenting on today is truncated, so the public and all of you have access electronically to over 600 or some slides. And the rationale there is that every school site had an opportunity to meet with me and Mrs. Magania, our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, who's going to be jump-starting this presentation today. And we wanted to talk through progress that they had made, lack thereof, and also some systems that are in place. And the purpose of that is to really build off of what the Orinda study, baseline study mentioned back in February of 2024. Prior to many of you who are board members, prior to me being a superintendent here, the district embarked on an opportunity for a third-party Orinda, who's co, who's founder and CEO, actually used to be an employee here in the district. They ran a baseline study. They did a deep dive on three schools, and then they interviewed and had some surveys across the district. Now, I had a chance to meet with Scott McGuire, who did the presentation that we'll make sure that the school district community has, if you don't have it already. And he walked me through the experiences and also the recommendations. Now, what's important when you get the report, and we'll be sure to put it in this week's board communication, is that there were three big bucket recommendations from that baseline study back in 2024. One of the recommendations was, and again, this was before this board and before the superintendent, one of the recommendations was that the superintendent need to communicate why we were doing this work, right? Why we needed to look at data, why we needed to look at systems. The second big bucket recommendation was, we needed to put everything on the table, and that's actually in the report, right? You needed to understand, in order to move forward, before you start planning, you need to understand what everybody was doing. Because there were a lot of schools, and we have 26, that have different practices. And there are schools that are making incredible gains, but they're using systems that they've developed at their sites. And there are schools that are struggling a little bit, and they may not have those systems in place. But before doing anything district-wide, the idea is to make sure we put those practices on the table so we know where we are and how we're doing. So that was actually a recommendation from the Orinda study, we'll make sure everybody has that. But I wanted to just plug that because tonight you're going to hear a couple of things, big bucket-wise. You're going to hear about the California Department of Education's dashboard data. Now, this came out last week, it was just released last week, so every school in the entire state of California now knows how they did in ELA, in math, in science, and as far as our students with special needs, our English learners, and some other criteria, college and career indicators and so forth. So we have incorporated that information into this presentation. You're also going to get a sense of how we're doing during the quarter. Now, if you run a business, you have business partners or leaders in your family, you know that four-profit companies do this every quarter. Every quarter, they know where they are in terms of marketing, human resources, finance, and everything. In academia, we're a little different, right? We tend to look at semester, trimester. But if you take a look at certain indicators, often it gives you time to course-correct, right, throughout the year rather than waiting toward the very end. So we are going to have the team members do this quarterly presentation. I also want to just, before I turn it over to Ms. Magania, I want to just read a little bit from this memo, just to get it on the record. As we conclude quarter one, which was over in October, so this is pretty late quarterly data, right? As we concluded quarter one of this school year, I wrote, "With deep gratitude and pride in the collective work underway across our school district, but please know that the purpose of this work is to celebrate the tremendous successes emerging from classrooms, school sites, and departments." Now, that may be, look, that may look very different across all schools, and if you had a chance to go in classrooms, you know it looks very different across schools. And so the purpose is to celebrate the successes. The second thing is, we want to deepen our shared understanding of our current academic process through thoughtful review of quarter-one data and our academic landscape in terms of our academic systems. And then third, we want to articulate our next steps toward greater cohesion. There have been lots of great work, we, you know, there has been lots of great work, we want to honor that. But we also want to make sure that we're clear about what it is that is designed in our curriculum maps, our pacing guides, our aligned benchmark assessments, and our instructional resources at the district level. Now, there are schools making tremendous progress, but they're making and creating their own systems at their sites, and they've shared that information with me. We want to make sure we're able to bring people together so we have a sense of exactly what Orinda said. Put all the resources on the table, right? What's working well, who's doing what, where, and how can we move forward? And so this was a way for us to just collect information, not to say, you know, someone's going to come from on high and do X, Y, and Z. We want to just do what Orinda recommended, which is put everything on the table. And then lastly, this is super important, and I've, the teams have heard me drive this home, because yes, maybe perhaps folks looked at data, but it's also important just to put on the record, that data as a tool for growth, not a weapon. As we move forward with our analysis, I want to underscore an essential value: We do not weaponize data in the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District anymore. Data should never be used to shame, blame, or diminish the work of teachers, principals, or departments. When data is weaponized, it creates fear, erodes trust, and ultimately harms the very people, students and staff, whom we are here to support. So rejecting weaponization does not mean avoiding accountability or delaying action. Instead, it means taking purposeful, thoughtful, honest, compassionate steps once data is revealed. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Magania, who's going to get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, Dr. Brashov, Dr. Conseil, board members, and union partners, and families who are listening. Before we get grounded in the presentation we're going to do today, I'd like to go over our mission and vision of Norwalk-Lamarada. So our mission statement is, in collaboration with our families and community partners, we educate and inspire all students to achieve their unique potential. That is our ultimate goal. Our vision statement is, every student is empowered with the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to become compassionate, confident leaders, and lifelong learners who impact our ever-changing world. I want to start by thanking our board and appreciate all your continued support and unwavering dedication. your continued support and unwavering dedication as we move through this work. For your leadership, your advocacy, and thoughtful guidance, make it possible for our district to provide high-quality learning opportunities, innovative programs, and nurturing environment where every student can thrive. We are going to go through our focus areas. We're going to be focusing mostly on academic excellence, but we are going to talk about fiscal sustainability, our parent and community partners, capacity building, and safe schools and school district communities. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sanchez, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Board of Education, guests, and those listening online. Like Ms. Magania mentioned, I'm going to begin by doing a brief overview. I do want to preface by telling the school board and those listening and here today that the majority of the slides within this section were actually presented to the board during the meeting that we had in June. But most of those slides actually had projections. And now, like Dr. Baker mentioned, now that the state has released the dashboard, they've actually released final numbers, and the data is not embargoed anymore, so we're able to discuss the final data publicly, like we're doing today, okay? So the very first thing I'm going to do is review the ELA achievement levels for the past five years, most recently the 24-25 data. We're at 49.5% proficient compared to the state. That puts us above the state average for the first time for the past five years. And I know that in the past, I believe it was Dr. Consio who mentioned, that was minimally a goal for us to be above state average. So I know that he's not here today, but I'm sure he'll tune into the presentation. So it's definitely something we want to celebrate for all the hard work that teachers in the classroom, administrators at the site, have worked hard to realize. It's not easy to grow and grow consistently like we have been doing for the past three years. So I want to acknowledge the hard work that made that possible. The other thing that I, the next thing, sorry, that I'll review, which was not covered, this is the only slide in this section that was not covered last time, simply because we don't have the ability to actually project this. The five-by-five grid pretty much just compares a school site's achievement to the previous students that were part of the achievement level for that year. I mean, it not only looks at unlike the achievement level here, which only measures students that met or exceeded the standard, this measured skill score growth. So for example, we have Hutchinson up in the upper right-hand corner, who is, who has a level high of achievement, and that's the metric that the state establishes for each content area. Not only is it high now, but it increased significantly to get there, right? So that's why those three school sites are within that metric. Immediately to the left of that, we have Garden Hill, Lamarada, and Norwalk High in English Language Arts. They're also considered high, but they only increase, not increase significantly. And I won't go through all of them, but this gives you just a snapshot of how students grew on a year-over-year basis. Instead of just having the number of students who might exceed the standard, it takes into account the scaled score in addition to the overall achievement as well, okay? And as you can see, I won't go through the exact count, but there's obviously more schools that maintained, increased, or increased significantly compared to schools that declined or declined significantly. So we definitely want to celebrate that as well. This is almost the exact same graph that we showed last time with a few exceptions. We have a color scheme through the presentation, not just in the slides that we're going to cover for the district office, but also for the remaining slides for school. The color scheme is that schools in the Lamarada family are coded in blue, schools in the Norwalk family are coded in purple, and then schools in the John Glenn family are colored in red, right? So that's, that's the theme that you'll see throughout the entire slide deck, for those that are accessing the entire slide deck, not just the slides that we're covering today, that theme holds throughout the presentation. The other thing that's different is that the final row, the 24-25, were previously projections, and now these are final med exceeded rates for each of those schools individually, along with the previous five years. So we have a total of six years on this slide for school achievement. And in terms of the projected numbers compared to the final numbers, most schools were within a quarter to a half percent, some were actually right on the mark. But there are, if you reference the presentation from back in June, and you notice that difference, it's simply because the projections do not take into account the business rules, which pretty much means that students who enrolled with us after CalPads date, or possibly left a school in our district and went to another school within our district, there's business rules that are applied to where that score counts. This is not the medium to really go into those technicalities, but that really explains why there will be a difference in the projection versus the final numbers. The business rules don't apply in projections. This would be middle school achievement rates, again, in English Language Arts, for the past six years, with 24-25 again being the final numbers. Same exact pattern as the elementary level. Most of the schools are within projection within a quarter to possibly a half percent point. And lastly, we have high schools, an exact same pattern, the projections were very close to the final numbers. Going to move on to the math. For math, we have a final med exceeded rate for last year for grades three through eight and 11 of 36.32. We grew a little more within math than we did compared to ELA. However, that growth is still about a percentage point away from being above state average. So it's definitely something we look forward to doing. I think part of what I definitely want to highlight here is that most recently, we did adopt textbooks and for math, sorry, at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So it's nice to see that this growth happened during that difficult time. I know that that's something that teachers across the board have been working hard to transfer from the previous curriculum to the new one. And that's something that we're continuing to do this year for elementary. Elementary is the most recent adoption, and we are continuing with CGI support and textbook support with our math mentors. So again, it's good to celebrate that we had such a large increase despite that difficulty of adopting a new textbook. So I want to congratulate all of our teachers for working hard to realize these gains. With the math placement report, and I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention, there was a typo on this slide. The one posted online reflects this as math. The title was the only typo. The graph was, the five-by-five grid was the correct image. However, there was a typo that this is, reads on the online version as math. So forgive me for that typo there. In terms of the five-by-five placement report for math, same exact thing. This compares the achievement of schools from the previous year compared to this year, specifically in scale score growth. We don't have as many schools who are either maintained, increased, or increased significantly. However, we do have more schools that are increased or increased significantly compared to schools that declined or declined significantly. This would be the previous six-year summary for math achievement. Again, same pattern. The color theme is by family, and the 24-25 achievement was very close to projection, with a few schools varying. I think that this one had the slightly higher variation, with up to three-quarters of a percent for some of our schools, but none of them were higher than that. This is the previous six years of achievement for, for math at the middle school level. And this is the one for high schools. And obviously, we definitely, like Dr. Baker mentioned, this data is not something that we're just using to highlight where we have gains, but obviously, it's an opportunity for us to share best practices across sites, and that's something that our principals are definitely doing within their conversations as we roll out this quarter-one quarterly data report. It's something that, I know myself as an ex-principal, I was always anxious to kind of learn what my colleagues were doing when their growth was higher than mine. And that's something that's currently happening with this finalized data, okay? All right. This would be the graduation rate for our school sites for the past five years. There was a little bit more variation with the projected rates that we shared with the school board back in June compared to the final numbers. The reason that this, there's a lot more variation within grad rate is simply because when a student transfers from one school to another school within the same district, neither school actually owns a graduation rate. The district data does capture that, though, right? So say, for example, a student from John Glenn goes to Norwalk or El Camino. In either case, if they return back or stay at their school, neither school will essentially own that student graduating or not, but it is reflected in the district-wide data. And that's why there's a lot more variation within the graduation projections, because that's a lot harder to keep track of, okay? Whereas at the elementary and middle, there's a lot less transferring within schools or outside of the school district compared to seniors, okay? Sorry. Forgive me, I'm going to do this slide first. This is the med exceeded rate for science achievement, and we have that for the past three years, not because we chose to only do three years, but because that's the only data that we have available to us. In this particular case, the projection was actually off by the highest amount of percentage, which is only 1%. We kind of estimated it at 30%, and we came in at higher, 1% higher at 31.01. The reason that that projection was off in this case is because we have a smaller cohort of students that are reflected. There's only three grade levels of test for science achievement. And so any, a smaller number of students have a higher impact on the percentage of students. And that's kind of the reason why the projections were off a little bit here. With both math and science achievement, we're still slightly below state average, which again, was previously mentioned by Dr. Consio as a goal for us. But nevertheless, there is growth year-over-year, practically across all three content areas over the past few years. But that's definitely, again, a goal that we hope to achieve soon. I'm going to go back to the science placement here, forgive me for the order. There's definitely a lot more schools that maintained within the achievement here. And part of what I want to acknowledge, just because it becomes so much more difficult, there's only a testing level, one testing level per level, meaning only fifth graders test in elementary, eighth graders test in middle, and then 11th graders test in high school. So they're only tested once at each level, making it a lot more difficult to vertically articulate, something that I know our math and ELA teachers benefit from. So it becomes a lot harder to test that large volume of content over one year, right? So that's part of why it becomes a little bit more difficult to have realized gains here. These would be the elementary science results. Part of what I want to highlight is, oh, sorry about that. Thank you. Forgive me for that. This is the only content area where we don't have the ability to compare, because it's an entirely different cohort of students that test every single year. You're able to do comparisons once you have various years. In other words, when you're an eighth grader, you won't have fifth grade data until you have four years of data available to you, right? And so that's why it's a lot more difficult to kind of analyze that through that lens, because this, every single year, you have an entirely new cohort of students that are tested. You only test one grade level per year, making it really difficult to do that. Targeted support, intervention, and also vertical articulation, okay? These would be our middle school results. And these would be our high school results. Again, I'm covering this really quickly, because we've already covered this in the past. And I know that this is something we're only doing just to kind of message to not just the school board, but our school community, what the final numbers ultimately came, came out to be. What we did not project last time during June was the college and career readiness, simply because it was, it's a lot more difficult to calculate this metric. In order to be considered prepared for college and career readiness, there's a long list of things that you can meet. And it's not just something that happens because of a test, like they do with ELA, science, and math. There's multiple criteria that have to be compared and analyzed, and that's something that's a lot more harder to predict accurately, and that's why we didn't, we chose not to do that last time. So these would be the 24-25 final numbers. And as you can see, we celebrate significant gains, year-over-year gains, compared to the previous metrics that we've shared with you. And I'll go into a little bit of which specific criteria showed higher gains than others. This is the CCR data for career technical education. In order to be considered prepared under CTE, you need to have completed a specific pathway progression, and also take a capstone course and earn a C minus or higher in that, right? That's something that's a multi-year project. Obviously, you want students to take a specific list of courses. However, having worked with our counselors in the past, I know that they would always bring concerns with regards to having to make difficult choices when it comes to scheduling kids, because if a student is behind on credits, for example, they're going to prioritize the student completing high school diploma, and rather, meeting the high school diploma requirements by completing courses they're missing, instead of completing the pathway course. So if there's a choice between the two, our counselors are always going to choose, trying to get the student graduated, compared to getting the student prepared with the CTE pathway completion, right? So it's not because of a lack of effort on behalf of our counselors or our site principals and teachers, it's just because it becomes a balancing act of having to meet, having to meet the high school diploma requirements as a priority, instead of meeting the CTE pathway course completion. And you'll see with the DNF rate that we also included in here, how there's a good chunk of students have fallen to that category, making it difficult to achieve gains in this. The other way to meet CCR preparedness is to have students take the CASP and ELA and math and earn a three or four in both of those assessments. The second a student does that, you automatically have that child meet the prepared CCR requirement. However, I do want to stress that if a student meets the preparedness of college and career readiness due to smarter balance, they're also calculated into other criteria if they also meet that criteria, right? So if a student, for example, completes a pathway, completed the course progression, and also got three and four on the ELA and math CASP, they're considered prepared in both, right? And that's why these percentages are a little off. They do not add up to 100, because it's not calculated that way. We also have CCR do enrollment. And so in this case, you have a student who completes two college courses, and in doing so, meets the prepared criteria for that. Lastly, we have, actually, second to last, we have advanced placements. So if a child takes two advanced placement courses and passes both AP tests, they're considered prepared. This is the first year, however, that in addition to that being an option, now the state is allowing students to be considered prepared if they just get a C minus or higher in the course as well, just like do enrollment. So that was one of the things the students, I think, were, not that there's any evidence, but just my speculation, that if a child had to choose between taking a do enrollment and an AP course, and all they had to do was pass one course to be considered prepared and earn college credit, versus pass the test and pass the course, kids would probably pass, rather, take the do enrollment course, right? And so I'm hoping that this helps kind of balance out the two, because as a previous AP teacher, I know that there's a lot, large benefit in taking AP courses in addition to do enrollment. There's also the ability for a student to meet A through G requirements to be considered prepared. And obviously, this is probably the most robust way to meet it, because it requires a student to be in the position to be able to meet A through G requirements, right? A lot of the students, just like with CT completers, having the choice between meeting A through G or meeting the high school diploma requirements, our counselors will obviously choose the student meeting the high school requirements instead of the A through G. So this limits the number of students who actually become targets for it because of that dilemma. And the last way that a student can be considered prepared is by completing the SEAL by literacy requirements, which predominantly means that the student masters a language by meeting, by passing an AP test in world languages, and also showing English proficiency in the English language by means of getting a three or four on the CASP as well. So those are the two requirements for that. All right. So that's pretty much the dashboard information. Now, I want to just review how we're tracking progress towards increasing the metrics that become final on the dashboard, right? So one of the ways we're doing it, and this is the focus area, obviously, that we're shooting to achieve by means of this progress monitoring. The very first one is to monitor the core data, and I know I previously mentioned that these assessments are imperfect and that our cohort of our teachers feel strongly that we need to move away from that. There's other teachers that have preference for other exams, and I previously mentioned to you that that was something that we, we're in the process of actually working through, and I'm sure we'll find the time to do that or continue that work this year. But nevertheless, this is the data for quarter one. The way we present the data for core is by all the different parts. In this particular case, this is the uppercase domain, where on average, district-wide, students average a 17.9 out of 26 for uppercase. They averaged a 15.4 out of 26 with lowercase. They average an 8.61 for consonants. They average a 1.46 in long vowels and a .44 in short vowels. Just Dr. Vidale.
What is, what is there, you mentioned that there is a preference for like change. What is the preference for? Is it for prioritizing sounds rather than the names of the letters?
I, I don't want to get into necessarily the objection to just one test. I think the overall is, one is the volume of testing that takes place, and I know teachers had a concern with previously, and I shared that at a previous presentation, right? There's just a lot of assessments going on, this being one of them. I think that to do that, answer justice, I would have to kind of go into a little deeper that I don't think the space is to do that now, but we can definitely provide you that information at a later time.
I ask because these scores here are a little concerning. There is a stronger direct relationship between the sounds that the letters make, initial sounds, and reading readiness and actually reading than what just naming the letters. And then when we look at the results for the, the sounds, well, when we look at the results for the names, the metrics for the names, the letter names, they're divided into uppercase and lowercase. However, that's not the case with the sounds, phonics, which is important because these letters are symbols to those children, and the B, capital B, although it has the same sound as the lowercase b and the d and the g and the q, for example, but they're, they look very different. And so I was looking at, when I look at like 15, oh my gosh, I keep going to that, where we have the lowercase, let's see, what slide was that?
Lowercase is...
20, 36. Yeah, when we look at the consonant sounds, we're looking at eight sounds by the end of, what is that, November 1st, that timeframe, was it?
So these were administered at the beginning of the year, and it's really just a screener at this point to give kind of baseline data for our teachers to use. So I do want to highlight that.
Within what timeframe, though, at the beginning of the year?
You know, I don't have those windows right up top of my head, so I can definitely, we can definitely provide those to you.
Yeah, and then so there are like eight here out of 21 sounds, but should really be 42 because they need to identify the sounds from the uppercase and the lowercase when they look seals separately, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vidale. All right. In addition to the core results, and I forgot to mention that this is the district slide, but each school site also got the exact same slide with their school's results on, in one bar, and then the district result in the other one. And that just allows us to kind of just compare. The entire slide deck is obviously available now publicly to everybody, but our principals obviously got it for the whole district, and they're able to kind of see each other's scores as well, and we're hoping that that leads to just positive discussions about outcomes. In terms of the I-ready scores, we presented I-ready scores for kindergarten separately from those in grades one through five, simply because the lowest score for kindergarten is students who score one grade level below versus grades one through five, they can have two or more grade levels below. So that's the reason we broke those up. So district-wide, currently, the overall placement for window one is that 72% of our kindergartens are one grade level below on their I-ready. Yes?
I have a question about that, too. So we see the number is 472 students where you have data for them out of the 656, right? There's quite a few that are missing. And 72% are below grade level. And then what is the benchmark for that? How is, do we have that information, like what is considered one grade below grade level?
So I'll just interject. I think it's important to note that this is the first time we've looked at quarterly data like this, and we know that, you know, elementaries are on trimester. I think it's also important to know that some schools did the I-ready and some are waiting to, you know, another trimester to do it. There hasn't been clear direction from the district in the past to say, hey, let's all have this information in on this time. And so even with the core, there are some schools that do that before school starts because they want to make sure that they are teaming together and planning with the pacing guides and the curriculum maps that they themselves created. The district didn't create that, and so they have that information going in. So when we talk about cohesive practices, this is something you're seeing. So when you see 472, that's who tested. We have way more kindergarteners that may not have tested or their scores aren't in. So this isn't necessarily a clear benchmark of every single kindergartner. It's only the few who took the assessment, but it does give us some information about several hundred kids, right? And so that's why we just want to make sure we understand who tested, who didn't, even in core at certain sites. There were some for vowel sounds and things where we had all zeros, not because the kid got zero, but because maybe that wasn't assessed. So there is, there are some nuances across the board, across schools, in terms of what we're assessing, when, and how we do that. And so we just took the data that we had when we had it.
Yeah, thank you. This percentage seems high, taking into consideration or keeping in mind that certain number of these students went to preschool and then TK, and then they've been in kindergarten for at least a month, and it's full-day kinder. One grade below, one grade level below, 72% of students.
So let me just add to that, Dr. Vidale, that the assessment for kindergarten is assessing kindergarten skill set. So, you know, to be honest with you, I would expect that number to be high because they haven't been taught kindergarten-level skill sets, right? So the idea is that that's the benchmark level at the beginning of the year, and after instruction throughout the year, there's additional benchmarks that allow you to see if there's been gains of those.
But this is cumulative knowledge because they have had exposure to these foundational skills, the ones that attended preschool and TK. They have had exposure.
Right. And there's definitely some number of students who attended, and I know that that's something that we previously discussed, and we can definitely provide you those final numbers in terms of what number of current kindergartens actually attended either TK or PK. But the current numbers are that, you know, significant number of students did not is the current guesstimate of that because of our current enrollment, right? We could definitely see how many students are enrolled right now in TK and how many enrolled in kindergarten, and that number is vastly different, and that happens on an annual basis.
We also know this is an electronic test, and so kinders are just coming into the system and may or may not have, you know, the modality around the mouse and the touchscreen and all of that, so we know that plays into it as well. Baseline information on the few kids who tested. As we go and we put protocols in place, we'll be able to get a better assessment of where we really are, but there are a lot of different things at play here when we're looking at
Definitely assessment tools is an area that needs some attention there. Yeah, the number of them, the type of assessments, the time it takes for, to administer the assessment, the timeframe that's allowed for administering the assessments that takes away from instructional, the instructional day and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vidale.
Real quick, just to add to that, though, perhaps a suggestion for upcoming, I know that this is just the first one, for upcoming reports is to see the effectiveness of TK and preschool, if we could have it disaggregated into students who their first, first time stepping into our schools is kindergarten versus students who were in preschool or TK, and if there's, or whether in our district or others, but basically, is it cumulative or have they just, this is the first time they're in front of a teacher?
Thank you. In addition to the overall score, we're also sharing the results from the different domains within I-ready, which are phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, comprehension overall, and then vocabulary. And again, you can clearly see that there's very, quite a bit of variation here with phonological awareness at 65, phonics at 72, high-frequency words at 85. And these are all things that I think, as we continue to implement this, are gonna lead to discussions about practices at school site, like Dr. Baker mentioned, that at times, due to that site autonomy, has led to possible differences in results that we can explore and systematize across the district.
How do I-ready and Lexis compare and contrast, or how are they different for the most part, because wondering about some overlaps.
I'm sorry, I missed that part. I-ready compared to what?
Yeah, I-ready compared to Lexia.
Lexia.
So she's referring to some of the literacy assessments in the memo, and so we don't actually administer Lexia district-wide. What I did here is I listed assessments that are used at different sites. So we don't actually have Lexia used district-wide, so we won't have that information. We can get that to you in an update, and same thing with DRA. There are schools in our district that use it, but it's not used district-wide right now. And so it's really important, again, to, the technical guy will explain what's in here. The memo says all of these are not really used across the district, but there are schools and teachers using them because they feel like it's helping them to better understand where kids are in terms of literacy. So we can get you that update in the board communication about the differences, because I think what you're getting at is there's probably some overlap, but Lexia and DRA are assessments that school sites have chosen, that teachers have chosen to use at those particular sites, and it is being done now.
Is DRA being used in kindergarten?
I'll double check.
It can be, it can be utilized.
Yes, yes, I'll double check which grade levels, not district-wide, but it is being used, and that's by choice, that's not mandated by the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna move on now to, this is the overall placement percentage for students in grades one through five, and this one shows that 32.5% of students who we collected data for reflect that. And again, we separated the two because the lowest result a student can get in this assessment is two or more grade levels below versus kinder, which is just one. We also present or provide the reclassification criteria analysis, which really means that district-wide during quarter one, we had 59 students who reclassified and met all criteria. However, we're also providing to sites the percentages or number of students who were close to reclassifying but didn't meet criterias either one or four. So for example, there's 233 students who have met everything but that criteria, and so it's worth exploring in terms of why they're not able to score a four if they're able to show basic skills mastery, and that's something that this data is gonna allow us to dig a little deeper into at the site level, to really explore not just what the causes are, but possible solutions as well. The number of students who didn't meet basic skills criteria but did meet LPAC criteria is 48. Again, same exact analysis in reverse. If they're able to pass the LPAC with the four, how is it that they're unable to then meet the basic skills criteria? And that's more of an internal factor that we set for ourselves, where we have a little bit more autonomy to decide within, within metrics that the state provides us. We not only provide that for ELs, but we also did a deeper dive for LTS, and these are ELs that have been in our system for seven or more years, right? So this is really only middle school and high school data that's provided. I'll next move on to the ninth grade data, which shows that 54.8% of our students, and like Dr. Baker mentioned, this percentage likely changed since the time that we captured it, because this was captured at the end of quarter one. However, it is obviously a worrisome number because this definitely impacts a student's success, like we stressed in the technical guide, this really just puts a student on a pathway, specifically if they have multiple classes where they have Ds and Fs, where now you're just playing catch-up for the four years of high school. And so focusing on that ninth grade class allows us to hopefully have impact on all the other factors that we cited earlier, which is graduation rate, college and career readiness, A through G requirements. If a student has this many, or this many students rather, have at least one DRF, that's concerning for us, and that's why it's worth tracking and analyzing, and each site also got their data.
So can I just, can you go back to that slide? So this is one of those metrics that it's important to know early. Ninth grade is a pivotal year for graduation for high school, for what you're gonna do after high school. So we can catch this early, know exactly which kids are struggling, we can intervene early to change that trajectory. So correct me if I'm wrong, what this is saying, district-wide, is that out of all of our ninth graders across every single school we have who have at least one DRF, we looked at 1,100 kids, 610 have at least one DRF in a class in ninth grade right now.
Correct. At least did so when we downloaded it, yes.
And that was back in October, which was a few weeks ago. So there's been time to make a difference. We met with principals, and they've been able to disaggregate which kids, what are they struggling with, and so forth. But this is, we're catching it early so that folks can intervene.
And I also want to stress that the purpose of bringing this up is to identify root causes, and at times, the root cause does not lie exactly in the classroom, right? There's kids who have so many needs that pairing them up with the rich resources we have on our campuses so that they can actually enter the classroom with the headspace to actually become learners is also something that we're tackling. It is not solely just a student coming in with missing basic skills, which does happen, right? As an old math teacher myself, I know that when I taught algebra one to ninth graders, they came in with very, very anemic skills, and that's definitely a portion of it, and remedying that problem is important. However, there's a variety of other issues that impact student's success on top of that that our counselors can help support with, our wellness centers can help support with, and that's something that's at play as well. So it isn't just solely an academic argument, right? It's across the board. Mental health or any other needs that the student has is definitely something that we're promoting within our discussions. We're also providing fall benchmark results, and this is for students in grades six through 11. Although students in nine and 10 do not take the CASP, we do administer benchmarks at those grade levels to help prepare students for that 11th grade test. In this particular case, I do want to stress that this is something that's been ongoing at the secondary level for a few years, and we're still in a refinement process where teachers feel after implementing something for a year, you know what, we need to make this change or this other change. We did meet with the cohort of teachers at the beginning of the year to kind of get their feedback on what changes were necessary, and it is something that we're continuing to do, and we'll do more of as we refine this process, like Dr. Baker mentioned. The curriculum apps and curriculum alignment is something that not only did Arinda tell us, but we already, we're in the process of rolling that out when they were doing it. They're just telling us it needs to be systematized, which is definitely something that... They're just telling us it needs to be systematized, which is definitely something that we've acknowledged, there's different practices at different sites. And although that can be beneficial, at times that can create some challenges as well. We are, the CCR data that you saw earlier is actually the final data for last year. And there is a one-year lag between that, just want to stress that. This is our current students. Currently, there's five hundred and twenty-six students that are at risk of not meeting CCR preparedness due to the CASP indicator. And the way we're making that correlation is using benchmark results. So if a student underperformed on the current ELA and math benchmark, then we're tagging them as a student who needs additional support. For SEAL by Literacy, that would be the course that they're enrolled in for world languages. If they specifically are earning below a C minus in that course, they're unable to meet the SEAL by Literacy. So these, there's ninety-two students currently enrolled in a AP World Language course and are underperforming with a C minus, below a C minus. And that triggers that intervention that's needed so that we can increase that SEAL by Literacy rate. For AP tests, same exact thing. If a student passed one AP test and is currently enrolled in a second course, but is earning below a C minus, there's twenty-three of them district-wide. And principal's able to pair them up with resources so that they can, although passing the course itself obviously doesn't happen until the end of the year, because they have to pass both semesters with a C minus or better. Immediate intervention to avoid being in a position where it's too late is why we're providing that to sites quarter by quarter. And I'm sorry, yeah, this is the CT Completers. There's forty-three students enrolled in a capstone course and are earning below a C minus. That data is also being provided to our school site principal so they can intervene and target intervention. I'm now going to pass it over to our wonderful executive director, Mr. Jim One, who's going to walk us through IEP data.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Good evening. The next two slides have to do with our students with disabilities. Our students with disabilities have individualized education plans created, our IEPs each year. Those are reviewed at least annually, and then re-eligibility is done at least every three years. Those IEPs include information about students' needs and students' strengths, and then ways to address the needs. We'll have goals for each student, those are annual goals. And we'll have services and accommodations that would be put in place to help students achieve those goals. It's important that we hold these on time so we can update those goals and we have new information about student needs or student growth. So the first slide here has to do with the number of IEPs that were held or that were, that should have been held and the number that were done on time and not on time. So what you can see right here is out of two hundred and twenty-three IEPs that should have been held in that first quarter, between the first, the start of the school year and October sixth, forty were not held on time. The rest were. This also isn't data, this data is really, has to do, as Dr. Baker said, with those IEPs that are done annually and those ones that are done, you know, the re-eligibility. It wouldn't capture all of the IEPs, for example, if a parent asked for an IEP to be held. This data would not be captured here. Those IEPs we would hold within thirty days of that request. It also wouldn't capture an IEP that a teacher said, hey, we need to meet on this student. It captures those IEPs that are due based on the dates they're supplied to CalPads for those annual and re-eligibility meetings. So that one has to do with the IEPs that were held that were incomplete by the due date. The next one, if I go the right way, is the same, it's the same number of IEPs. We held two hundred and five during that time. Remember, there were two hundred and twenty-three due, two hundred and five were actually held. Out of those IEPs, we also look at which ones have parental consent. We can't implement an IEP unless a parent agrees to the IEP. We can still certainly implement the previous IEP, things would be still in place from there. But to have a new IEP with new goals, new services, new supports, we do need parent consent. So this tracks, out of the two hundred and five IEPs that we held during that time that were due, a hundred and eighty-eight had parental consent, and we were allowed to implement those. There are reasons that we don't get parental consent. Sometimes parents want to take it home and review it. Sometimes they want to get a little bit of advice or get some more information on it. Same with when IEPs are not held on time. There are some reasons for that. Sometimes students may move outside of the district, right, a part of it, or be gone and then come back. Other times, parents may be unavailable or students may be unavailable at a certain time. So we have codes that we mark to track those, to see where we are with that as well. The next one is our district focus area two, fiscal sustainability. And Mr. Estrado.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So on our SMART goals, we have one reduced operational deficit by three million dollars in the, our projections. And our item number two is to get funding up to two hundred and fifty thousand. On item number one, you're going to be seeing our report coming in December, what is known as the first interim report. And then that's when we'll be showing you our new projections. And let's keep in mind that when the report is released in December, the assumptions will change in January, because the state will be providing these assumptions like three weeks later. On item number two, we've been working on identifying some categoricals, and that'll help us meet our goal. So I go up. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. On the, on this slide, as you go through the entire PowerPoint, this is broken down by school site. And this sort of really talks about all the three main budgets for the school sites. One is called a school site budget, three hundred and fifty lottery. We have title one, and also what is known as LCFF. And then what you see right now is the total district budget on those three items, and how we're tracking so far. And this is broken down by site as you go through the pages. This is really important because all the schools have a full plan for the whole year. And as we shared with you last time during December, during September, we are about to slow down in almost closed operations by March. And so we're about to see some spikes, but the goal is to stay within the six million dollars by site. I cannot follow directions. And now, and we also have the total work orders. These are basically the work orders when something is breaking. The school site will complete a work order, please can fix the broken window. This is total, one, almost four weeks ago. And this story really changes almost by the minute. Because then there's somebody who's in transit, somebody who had to wait for the parts, somebody that are not classified under repairs, but some go under facilities. You know, one thing is can fix the broken window, and another thing is like, can you paint the whole school? Well, it's two different things. So that is the total so far, and when you go through the school sites, then they're broken down by site, how many have been submitted and how many have been processed. Then at this point.
And sorry, Mr. Santian, I think it's important to know, can we go back to that slide? Again, these are, these are all data points at this point. We pulled the data back in October. And so to Estrado's point, just want to make that clear, that folks are putting in work orders every day, right, across all schools, all facilities. So when we pull the data, the moment we pull it, someone puts a work order in, it's not going to be reflected here, because we're not going back and, you know, kind of revamping or revising. We're just pulling it from a snapshot in time. So just wanted to make that clear. This, to your point, these data points were pulled back in October.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Yes, I completely forgot. And SMART goal, each semester, parents' satisfaction. I would like to invite, who's doing? I would love to speak on this one, but then, yeah, this is my, yeah.
Sorry, moved too quickly. So for our focus area number three, we're trying to meet the robust goal of improving by twenty-five percent. The percent of families who are satisfied. And this is impartial data simply because we are not, we have yet to collect this data, but we thought it was important to message to both school sites and obviously the community and the school board how we're going to be presenting the data. The survey will be administered during quarter two, and we'll present that to the school board and the community at that point. But ultimately, we're going to measure how many parents feel that satisfaction through this individual survey. And that'll come out of our PIO's office, Mr. Chris Hartgraves.
And the rationale behind selecting certain data points for parent engagement is born out of what parents said they wanted to do. A lot of parents last semester during the ninety-day plan, they said they wanted more opportunities to volunteer in their schools, right? And so how do we measure that? Well, we have to ask and better understand who's able to volunteer, who, where are their barriers to that? And so this is going to be baseline for second semester. We have to actually create a tool or work with a third party to create a tool that gather that. But we picked some data points that came straight from parents and a lot of the parent meetings that we had. And again, one of the things that they said, you know, folks who have time on their hands, they are really engaged in their kids' education, they said, I want to spend more time in my kid's classroom or help out my school during the school day. So that's one of the reasons why we're going to be looking at how many parents have that opportunity.
And I'm sorry, I got them reversed. This is volunteering, and the next one was that satisfaction. I apologize. And again, both of those surveys have not been administered, but will be administered during quarter two, and the data will be presented in this manner. I'm next going to bring up Dr. Gatto, who's going to go over district focus area number four.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Good evening, everyone. Focus area number four is really about building capacity across the district and offering growth opportunities for our employees. And so I'm excited to announce that we, in collaboration with CSCA, I want to thank President Hodegi for her collaboration on this. We are building what are called onboarding academies for our classified employees. So if you're a new clerk, attendance clerk, secretary, you're going to go through a series of trainings through the different departments at the district office before you even step foot at your school site and hit your desk or your workspace. So you're going to spend some time in HR, in business services, in IT. Different divisions will be providing training based on the respective classifications. In addition, what is going to be born out of this are desk manuals that each position will have available electronically, so they can always reference back to those trainings and that material once they get to their position. And lastly, we're going to have kind of a mentor component, where they will be able to kind of sit with someone who's already doing the job and get some tips and tools so that they can be successful and also have someone they can call if they have questions down the road. So this is under development. We're working collaboratively with our departments and our labor partners to, CSCA in particular, to build these out. So more to come the next update. Okay. Professional learning is a focus area as well. We are tracking how many employees are engaging in professional learning opportunities on a quarterly basis. And we also want to know, in their estimation, their opinion, was that professional learning opportunity impactful? Did it have a positive impact on their current role? So the first graph you're going to see is about the total number of employees that engaged in a professional learning opportunity during the first quarter. So out of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six employees, we had one thousand one hundred and thirty-one who reported that they engaged in a professional learning opportunity. So that's about forty percent. And then when we look at the positive impact of the employees who engage in a professional learning opportunity, we ask them to submit a survey about the positive impact that it may have had on them and indicate whether that PLO, we call it, has had a positive impact on them. And so of the respondents, the one thousand eighty, we had eight hundred and thirty-eight who reported a positive impact. So that's seventy-seven point six percent. I'd like to now call up my colleague, Chief of School Safety, Adrian Valdez.
Good evening, Board. How you guys doing tonight? All right, mine should be short and sweet, but a couple of things that we're focused on here, as you know, is the development of our officers. And some of the other things that we covered are emergency operations plans for the different schools in our district. And then lastly, one of our programs, as it measures our access to campuses. And those are some of the things that you've heard me talk about independently or individually to you guys. The first one that we talked, we're trying to flag our visitors on campus. And we implemented and deployed a system where we're managing or we're tracking all the individuals that are on our campus, whether they be volunteers, parents, individuals that are just not staff members. So we're trying to track that. This is early data from quarter one. We implemented this, we deployed this program later in the quarter, so it's a small sample of what you're going to get in the future quarters. But as you can see, we flagged or we monitored four hundred and ninety-six folks that came to our campus store. And we only flagged two people that fit the profile of the people registered in the sex offender registry. And those are the two people that we identified on this. Now, a little bit of history here, just for you to know that we started this pilot program on, we wanted the pilot program on three campuses to evaluate its effectiveness across the entire district and the campuses in our district. We only deployed it on one. We identified some glitches in the system that we needed to work on. I think some of the board members were present at one of the high schools, where we encountered some glitches and some things that need to be cleaned up before we deploy it district-wide. And as we're, as we see those glitches, we were trying to really harness it. We, the current program is installed or has been deployed at our, one of our high schools. And this is where we got this data. As you can see, two is quite sufficient in just a small sample. I think the sample is about a week, maybe a little, about two weeks long, where we encountered two folks that were on the registered sex offenders. Now, this doesn't include the other folks that we would have TROs and things like that, temporary restraining orders. This is just simply the data that we had. This doesn't flag the other two. So we're able to make sure that we address those threats accurately.
Real quick, parents, were they parents or have, you know, other business on campus? Because someone could have that in their past, but they have a kid at the school.
Right, and as you know, as you know, the law requires that we still allow them on campus. So we had to take steps to provide escort and make sure that they were.
My question is, do people have any business on the campus?
Yes.
Okay, okay, right.
So we took the proper steps to make sure that this was monitored across the, as they were on our campus. This next slide here is focused more on the emergency operations plans, not the earthquake preparedness and the drills that we did like on the sixteenth here of this past month. But this is more focused on the threat assessment that we've conducted with lockdowns and how we coordinate with our partners in law enforcement and the public safety components that we work with closely. So this is focused on establishing emergency operation plans that I have for reunification area in the event that there's a lockdown, how we're going to get those folks. If the lockdown includes a larger geographic area, we have a reunification area in one, and then we have a second, an alternate. And then, and it's actually in conjunction with our partners in, at the Norwalk Sheriff's Department and the public safety departments in both cities. So it's a quite comprehensive review of each school. So we're taking each school as we're going through or each site and determining what our vulnerabilities are, what we're looking at, blind spots as far as surveillance capabilities, and also some areas where we just simply identify gates that don't open, that sort of thing. In the event that we do have to evacuate in a swift manner, we know where our buses need to be, how we need to deploy them, and where we need to have them. And what I'm doing is I'm going out to each individual campus and going through these assessments. And also going with the staff on, I've done a couple of them already, but haven't completed the emergency operations plan for each one. So that's what we're doing, as you see this chart here, it only has the one reflected because that's that small sample. All right. As you know, our officers deal with everything from traffic flow issues to As you know, our officers deal with everything from traffic flow issues to threats on campuses that are in the evening hours, maybe some people that are on our campus without, that shouldn't be at night, and those types of threats. So we're really enhancing the level of our readiness for, mission readiness for our officers and providing quarterly training on a regular basis. The first quarter, we just focused on the mandatory training that they're required to have. The second, third, and fourth quarter will focus more on officer tactic techniques that will have them ready to combat anything, whether it be a criminal situation where we're involving, involved with a potential suspect that we have to apprehend or address to maybe some more legal aspects or something that has to deal with searching and detaining a suspect, that we do it within compliance. And that, those are, what you see here is a small number because that just represents our school safety officers, the uniform officers that you see. Although they're professional and mission-ready as we speak, continuing to develop their ability to respond to the different things that we encounter is something that we need to maintain. So the quarterly training will be essential to make sure that we do that. Is that good? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wood, I think.
I'm sorry, got a question.
No, I just, just to comment. The Norwalk, every year they have a luncheon for first responders. Just wanted to give you kudos on, not only for being a good partner, they mentioned the great opportunities that they've been getting feedbacks to be able to come into our school sites if needed, and just the great work that you've been doing. I know you've been meeting with them and also with the county resources. So just thank you for being out there and bringing whatever resources you can to our safety for our students.
Well, thank you for the support. The city of Norwalk and La Mirada have been extremely supportive of the program and everything that we're doing in preparedness for any emergency that we have. As you know, we participated in their Emergency Operations Center tabletop exercise, which was extremely helpful to know how many folks in the community, not only the emergency services that are in the city, but also the community itself. The large-scale tabletop exercise really identified some of our partners in the community college and our private schools and the Norwalk Metropolitan Center that were readily available to provide us any assistance, whether it be transportation, sites to use in the event that we need to house our students in a different location. So it was extremely, it was very fulfilling to see how well the community supports the Norwalk-La Mirada Unified School District. Thank you for reminding me of that, sir.
Good question. I'd like to know a little bit more about the types of training that you have in place. And with those trainings, do you also collaborate with the sheriffs?
So a lot of the training that we're, for instance, this next quarter, right here, the next couple of weeks, we have baton tactics and handcuffing techniques. And those are all through, actually certified instructors that are going to come out and do it, whether it be federal, state, local. And those are certified instructors that can provide the training for our officers. The following quarter might be something more like defensive tactics, whether it's ground fighting or it be just simple searching of students. And then you can focus on the legal aspects of maybe de-escalation training, because our officers are largely in part, they de-escalate situations more often than not. So those skills and those technical abilities are probably something that they would really benefit from. Not that they don't have them. I'm just telling you that sometimes training is new. As you know, with evolving techniques, we have ways to enhance their ability to respond these things, whether it's a parent conflict that they're de-escalating or a student situation that they're de-escalating. They're exposed to quite a bit, and I think that the training that we'll provide and we're going to use to enhance our officers, I keep pointing this way because one of our officers is standing in front of me, but they all represent the, how professional and how well-equipped they'll be when we move forward.
That's great. And then, so do we now plan on having those implemented on a yearly basis?
That's the plan. The plan is to roll them out on a quarterly basis so that we take a chunk out of it each quarter. In my former life, we used to have quarterly training that would continue that development. And then one of the quarters would be maybe operations assessments where they're doing the assessments. Some of the officers are coming out to do the threat assessments on the campuses that they typically oversee. And we know that where the vulnerabilities are. And they're going to be the first person to assist local law enforcement because they know the area probably a lot more than anybody else as far as where we need to be for a casualty collection point or where we need to move our resources, where we can actually be within view, where we have surveillance capabilities and things of that nature.
And will there be like a certificate to acknowledge that training as well?
I'm sorry?
A certificate to acknowledge the training as well?
Absolutely. Every training program will be tracked and insured.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any opportunity we have to gather parent input and respond to parent input, we appreciate. And so I'm excited to talk about our preschool parent partnership program. And I can tell you, trustee Mesqua has been in our C A C meetings and has heard the need that our parents have to be able to vocalize any needs they have and to have us fully respond to those, not just to hear them, but to respond to them. This is new to us, so the numbers look a little bit low here. But the purpose behind this is to bring our kids in. We have our preschoolers. We're the first experience they have with school. They're just coming to us. We want to reach out to our parents, invite all parents of preschool students and special ed to come and meet with us and do a series of trainings. Right now, it's every other month. We plan to do it monthly as we grow. The purpose of the trainings would be to talk to parents about the partnership we're going to have. We can be partners in special ed for the next 19 years. So what do the 19 years look like? You know, what does adult transition program look like? What resources are there later? Because those 19 years go by really, really fast. And for us to be true partners, what can you expect from us? What do we need from you? How do we work together? And then also to build a system of support for our families by introducing families and letting them work together too as we go through the processes. So for our very first opportunities that we had, out of 126 parents that were invited, we had about 4%, I'll take my glasses off, I don't know why. We had about six parents come, and we had two trainings, one at Foster Road and one at Sanchez. We are advertising this through our communications department. Our principals at both schools are helping us. Our teachers, our preschool teachers are helping us. And we plan to see that number grow, and we're really excited about the opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Dr. Sanchez.
All right, this is the last slide here. So the last data piece that we'll review is the data from the climate and culture survey. This is the same survey we've administered every year now for the past at least four years. Previously, we used to refer to this as Panorama. But when we first had to cost, cut costs rather, this was one of the platforms that we did cut. We were administering it in-house with Google Form. The window doesn't close until Wednesday of this week, so that's why you have kind of a significant number of results missing there. And when I captured this data, it was at the beginning of last week. So the refreshed data will be provided, rather, the final data will be provided in a board update to you, just to kind of give you a good snapshot of it. The only two domains within the survey that we monitor are sense of belonging and safety. And again, those were two of the lowest scoring items when we first started this journey, and they regularly continue to be that. And so far, of the 6,824 students, the, I'm sorry, the presentation that we gave in June gave a two-year comparison, so we'll be doing that once we have that two years of data, similar to how we did last time, but right now it's only at the fall benchmark, and that's why we're providing it just for fall of 2025, okay? Yes.
May we go back to a few slides, couple of slides?
Sure. Which slide?
So the five-by-five, slide seven in E L A, the placement, the progress report there? I think it was seven. I didn't see the number, but it might have been seven. It was the first one, the one that you started with. Yes, the E L A matrix, progress report. It was nine, nine? Okay. Thank you. That's the one. Okay, great. Thank you. I just have some observations. And by the way, I really appreciate all your hard work on this presentation and just compiling the data and displaying it this way, all of these tables, these visuals.
It was a team effort. I just want to acknowledge it. A lot of people contributed to this.
For sure. And a lot of work, a lot of time. I am cognizant of that. Okay, so I've noticed that there's overall good progress in math throughout the district. It's quite evident. I also observed some good progress in E L A, mostly in secondary schools. Okay. And I observed that our elementary schools are in need of more support in E L A. And when we look at this matrix here, we have 14 of our 16 schools, which is about 87% of our elementary schools, in yellow, orange, and red, and a little bit of green there. That just increased a little bit. I can see across the top, it's, we're looking at whether they increased or maintain, increased significantly. Please tell us just a little bit briefly about the left side here, where it says very high status, high, medium, low, because we have many elementary schools in the medium, low, and very low, well, medium and low. I see, so if you could just give us a little bit more, elaborate a little bit on that.
Sure. So the state sets the criteria to be considered high. And I didn't mention it earlier because I think that in years past, when we do present in the spring, we go into this a little bit more in depth. The metric for English is higher, simply because most schools have a higher E L A achievement. In order to be considered high, for example, for a school with E L A, the percentage of students that have to meet or exceed the standard is a lot higher.
Can you quantify that?
I don't know it off the top of my head. I wish I knew. And I am a math-minded person. I just, the numbers don't come to me right now.
It's okay.
But we can definitely provide that to you.
Yeah, but if it comes from the state, it's usually a little marginal anyway. It's a little low. They're not, they don't have really high standards.
Well, they're higher for E L A than they are for math. I just, you know, I thought that that was worth pointing out in terms of why you have a larger percentage of schools in E L A, scoring at that medium to low, simply because the percentage of the range that they set for those schools, rather, for that content area is significantly higher. And I, again, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that it's a meaningful difference. It isn't just a few percentage points. We're talking about upwards of 15, 20% around there.
Okay, thank you. And so I did, I spent several hours examining the data. I love to, I love to examine the data and see patterns.
You and I both.
And so what I did was I wanted to see, okay, so this is what increased significantly and high performing looks like. And we see here that there's Hutchinson Middle School and Benton. There's two middle schools and one elementary school. And then we also have in the increased, we have one elementary school and two high schools. Now, for the sake of an illustration, right? Let's take Hutchinson Middle School. And then on the left, we have Garden Hill that feeds into, and these are quote-unquote high and exemplary somewhat, right? So I looked at their performance. I went into their metrics. And so when we look at, if we go to, can you go to slide 203? That's for Hutchinson E L A proficiency, sixth grade, incoming sixth grade students. Oh, it's okay. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Because this school is doing very well in science and in language arts. They, by the time those students complete the eighth grade, those six, incoming sixth graders complete eighth grade, they have, their proficiency with all of their intervention efforts and their strategies, which I was impressed with, mind mapping, color coding, many, many scaffolds, okay? We look here and see, wow, well, how did they start? And this is a picture, correct? This is a picture of incoming sixth graders this first quarter. Forty-eight percent of them were at E L A proficiency.
I just, actually, it's all students in grade six through eight. I'm sorry.
Because when I met with the principal at Hutchinson last week, I asked her about the incoming proficiency of those sixth grade students. And she said they come in at 48% proficiency, and by the end of eighth grade, they're at 68 proficiency. So these, this is where they are. And so I asked myself, if these students were to come in higher at 68 proficiency, wow, when they leave the eighth grade and they get to the high schools, it would just be amazing, right? And so I thought, okay, this is what the, I asked the principal, this is what she answered, and I see it here again. I said, okay, well, let me look at this other high-performing school, which feeds into that middle school, which is Garden Hill. So would you please go to slides 427, 428, 430, 436 there? It's just a series of them there. Beginning with 427. Okay, so here we have iReady, Kinder Phonics. And this is the number stats of the students that are one grade below, right, one grade level below. So we have 48%, almost 50% of students that are one grade below.
Correct.
And I'm thinking about, if this is the, according to the matrix, the high performing with increased gains. Wondering where the others are, the ones in the yellow, red, and orange and part of the green areas, correct? And then let's go to 428, please. And again, here we see one grade below, one grade level below, and we have 76% of the students are one grade level below in their high-frequency words. And I'm wondering, what is the, what are the expectations? Is this, how many, how many high-frequency words should they know by the end of the first trimester? Is it 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70? So we don't have that information. However, 76% that are one grade level below is high.
So Dr. V, just wanted to plug a caveat to the data for Garden Hill. I think it's important to know, again, and this is from me literally having one-on-ones with every single principal before doing this report. And so every, can you go back to the previous slide? I think it's important to know that not every, this percentage doesn't represent every kindergartner at the school. It's a very small sample. Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Just for the public to know.
True, yeah. Which will definitely skew the results, either up or downward, but they're still significantly high here. And then 430, I'm sorry, 428. And then here we see, well, for the high-frequency words, I think we just saw that one. And then 430. So that's for vocabulary. And again, one grade level below in vocabulary, 64% of the students are one level below for those 33 out of the 82. And then why is there such a discrepancy out of the 82 students, only 33? Oh, wait a minute, that's the percent, right? Wait, 33 of the 82 were tested, or is that 31?
Yeah, that would be 33 out of the 82 tested.
What happened to the others? It's more than half.
So there was a practice in the district that in Kinder, some, it wasn't mandatory to give the iReady at Kinder. So some teachers went ahead and did it, some schools So some teachers went ahead and did it. Some schools do it with all their Kinders and some don't. That's a longstanding practice. That's not new this year at all. But we wanted to see how kids are doing now. And so those who, you know, took the time to do it, it's just a snapshot. It's not a common practice in the district across every single school with Kinder. So you do see this difference. And so we did just pull the data that we do have. But there was a teacher or a couple who did, you know, who, you know, assessed. But typically, they will assess like in later years, or not later years, but later months. And part of it has to do with the fact that a kid who's new, some people have concern about, you know, the kid being new and not being able to use a mouse or touchscreen and trying to teach that. It is an electronic test.
Again, the technology, yeah.
The technology can be a hindrance, but so we had a higher participation rates at different schools. So you can't really say that this is 64% of all Kinder at this particular school. It's just of the kids who assessed.
Correct. And then we have the district-wide, which is 66%.
Correct. Of the kids who assessed. Yes.
And that's, that's pretty high. 674 out of 857.
That's a good sample.
Yeah, it's a good sample size. And then 436, please. Okay, so here we have the consonant sounds. And as I stated earlier, those are extremely important in predicting reading readiness and decoding, just reading, right? Comprehension comes later for proficiency. And so we see that 77 of 81 students were able to just like identify the sound. 10 sounds, is that correct? Is that what that's showing us?
It's that the average for the 77 students is they were able to recognize that many, yes.
10 sounds out of 42 sounds, plus consonants, plus the long vowels and the short vowels.
The maximum in this section is actually 20. That's how many points are assigned in it. And so 10.57 out of 20 is what the school average, or the grade level average.
Yeah, they're just counting the consonants, but we don't know if they're capital or lowercase, because it's just...
Yeah, I would, I would have to kind of get back to you on that, but I want to stress that the 10.57 is not out of 42. It's actually out of 20 possible points.
Right, which is still concerning, because as I mentioned earlier, when the children look at these, at that age, the students that I had in very similar demographics here in Little Lake, in Norwalk, on Pioneer Crew, Patterson Elementary School, they came from the shelter, they came from, I mean, relatives in that mental hospital there. And most of them didn't go to preschool. We didn't have TK back then. TK started back in 2004, I believe. And it was half-day kindergarten. And so I had students coming from just recent arrivals that didn't even know how to use the drinking fountain in my classroom, or hold a pencil or cut or anything. So I understand where they're coming from. And so my point is that when these children see those letters, to them, whether they're letters, numbers, or shapes, they're all just symbols. And so they need to learn the sounds of those. They need to be able to do that with capital letters and then also with lowercase, because they look different, many of them, right? Okay, and then 437, I'm almost done, just 437 and 438. So there we go. It's much lower. I know that English is harder, because we have all these sounds, right? But I mean, long vowel sounds by November 1st, 77 out of 81 students could only identify one sound, the average, on the average. By November, no, what is it? But what is the testing window?
So I'll pull up the, I'll pull up the testing window, so we have that. I think Mr. Rayburn, you can speak to it. Again, some schools assess during the testing window, some schools assess before school even starts. So it's very different, and we spoke to every principal about this. So while Mr. Rayburn, who is our assessment leader in the district, supported by Dr. Sanchez, he can tell you what the assessment window is. But keep in mind, there are school sites that choose to assess before school starts.
So that's correct. For Garden Hill, I think you mentioned they do it earlier. But when we look at the district, look at the district, that's 1.4. That's the entire district.
Of the kids who took it when we, by the time we had pulled the data, yes. But we'll go to the next question you have. But in the meantime, Mr. Rayburn, can you just pull up the exact dates of the assessment window, so we have that on record? We need you at the mic, sir, please.
When did we pull the data?
The data was entered into Illuminate, our data warehouse system, by September 19th. So the window was from September 4th through December 19th.
For this year, for this data.
September. I'm fixated on Christmas.
Eyes, clearly.
The holidays are approaching. They're looming large.
September 4th through...
Yeah, September 4th through September 19th was the window. The scores were entered into Illuminate's product DNA, where we store them, by September 19th.
So they had been in school for about, what, three or four weeks?
Just a few weeks, yes.
Four weeks.
And that's the district assessment window. Again, some have done it prior to the window, prior to the kids coming to class, which has been reported to us.
That's true.
And I know that when, when this is part of the morning routine, or whenever throughout the day, where they're going through these sounds, singing and moving and everything, during those few weeks when they're learning rules, routines, and procedures, which is so important at that grade level. So when it seems perhaps there isn't a strong focus on identifying sounds, maybe the priority is the letter names? Not sure. I'm just wondering. I have a lot of questions about this.
So just want to clarify, and again, this is good dialogue, right? But I want to just be careful about painting a broad brush. And I think in our one-on-ones, we'll be able to follow up. I want you to be able to see the level of detail that happens at Garden Hill in terms of their pacing guides, their curriculum maps, how they have created their own progress monitoring sheet for Core, because it is extensive. And, you know, they have created their own system. And again, I know when we talk about Garden Hill, we say, oh, well, that's in La Mirada. The truth is, we disaggregated the enrollment. There are a significant number of kids who do not live in La Mirada who attend that school. The teachers are building their own system. And so I want to be able to get you copies of that. When we met, I didn't have it, because I, my meeting with Ms. Gilbert was after my meeting with you. So I didn't have it to share with you back then. But I want to be able to share with you the difference between what the district has created and then some samples of what, you know, teachers have created and staff have created at high-performing schools in the district in Norwalk and La Mirada. We've got, like you mentioned, high-functioning schools in both cities. But they are at the school site level. They're creating materials, and they're collaborating and doing that work. And we have templates that show that that's what they're doing. So just, I want to be careful about how we're characterizing this and be able to show you the templates that they have, especially at that school. I think you'd be pretty impressed.
Thanks, yeah. We would really appreciate seeing, I would really appreciate seeing the, just being able to understand and see more clearly what's creating those assessment gaps. And then I would like to see the pacing guides and curriculum maps. Those give a lot of information. And then just a lot of information on formative assessment for checking for monitoring progress more frequently, especially in the early stages of reading readiness, language development. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Tree?
I have several questions concerning, so I was saving them to the very last. Is that okay?
Sure.
It does make it a little bit difficult to understand the data when not everybody, it's not a uniform process, where everybody's testing at the same time. So, you know, some kids are not testing, some are, so it's, it's a, I know we want a kind of a screenshot of what's happening. Just a couple of questions from me, and I'll try to be very quickly. Thanks so much for all the work that you've put into this. When I saw 640 slides that I had to go through over the weekend, including the memo and everything else, I was like, oh, my gosh. But anyhow, it would have been extremely helpful, obviously, to have also the grade levels next to each other on some of these subjects. And then have, you know, we have so many SMART goals, but have them right underneath of what we're going to do, right? The specifics, the measurable, the attainable, the relevant, the time bound. That would have been extremely helpful, so that, because we've had enough time, right? If we had the data from prior, we kind of took it from the earlier presentation, the numbers didn't really change a whole lot. I think we could have plugged that in as well, because we had those key performance indicators already on our hand. I just have a quick question also on those SMART goals. Slide 6. What, what is the baseline? Because we have, you know, California State Dashboard will see improvements with the goal of 5% from the baseline year. Is it 24, 25?
Can you go to the slide, so we can just kind of see it?
Sorry.
Yeah, number 6.
Okay, so during a prior, a previous study session, we went over superintendent and district-wide goals. And after, this was after we had gone through a process of me doing the 90-day plan and connecting with people. I knew going in that we did not have consistent ways across the whole district to measure some of the literacy components that Dr. V really was driving home, given her expertise. I knew that we didn't have those systems in place. And so it would have been unfair to the system to say, okay, we're going to make these gains, and all of you up there give different assessments. Or you give it at different times, and we measure using different tools, right? And so I know for a fact that what's happening at certain schools at elementary is not happening in some of the schools that didn't make the gains. Okay? And so what I wanted to be able to do is say, we need to take this year to put everything on the table, which is what Arinda told us to do in 2024, right? You can see from our labor partners that they want to be a part of the process. We want them to be a part of the process. But we have to say where we are and what's happening at different schools and really be sober about that. During this year, the goal is to create the systems that would allow me to tell not just Dr. V, but all of you, how are kindergartners doing in vowel sounds? Because we're all doing the same thing. Right now, we do not do all the same thing, and tests are given at different times. And different schools are in fact using different assessments. That's a fact, not creating that, making that up. Even Arinda has that in their study, okay? So what I've put in our goal, knowing that going into this school year, was saying the baseline year beginning 2020, 26, 27, because this year we can commit to collaborating to put some systems in place, right? I can show you what schools that are high-functioning or that are getting gains in Norwalk and La Mirada, what they're doing. They can show you. They can work collaboratively. You put a system in place. But we got to take this year to do that work. And then use our results to say, that's our baseline year, because everybody's doing the same thing. It is literally unfair to look at a school that has no additional literacy assessments in place and say, hey, I need you to make 5% gains. Right? With the challenges that they have, with the gaps that I've shared with folks in the pacing guides and the curriculum maps. We have to work collaboratively to build the system that it does not exist across all schools. And we do have some great schools in both cities. We've got some great practices. But the truth is that all 26 schools are doing different things. And so this goal says, beginning with 26, 27, all strategic priority areas measured on the California Dashboard will see improvements with a goal of 5%. That means we can take the full year to do the real work in order to say, okay, now that you all have the same system, now it's fair to, to measure you in this way. I do think we are going to get some gains this year, because we've made some critical changes. We're supporting and we really respect having teachers in front of the kids more often than not. So I'm not pulling teachers out of classes for district initiatives as much as they've been pulled out in the past, because a kid who has their classroom teacher more often is more likely to be successful than a kid that has a sub 30 times a year, right? That's just a fact. And so we also are working collaboratively with our school site leaders, who, some of the leaders who are making gains, they're very strong in instructional practices. Like you can talk to Mr. Lazzo at Morrison, he knows the work instructionally, right? As are, you know, as does Dr. Newcomb. I always want to call her Dr. Glazier, Dr. Newcomb at Glacier. So we've got some really strong practices, but they aren't shared across schools, right? So if you're an instructional leader and I'm not, you have an advantage with your kids. But if we share and collaborate, then I can also reap the benefits. So this is saying that the baseline year is next year, we are going to see some gains this year, because we're just increasing instructional time. And we're looking at data very clearly and honestly, and then working with leaders. So I hope that answers your question, but that's the rationale there, because I knew going into this year, we had too many assessments, too many different systems across too many schools.
So 25, 26 then? No.
26, 27. I'm betting we're going to see incredible improvements across all of the dashboard metrics. I think we're going to get some gains this year, don't get me wrong.
From this information, right?
From this information, you get systems, we're making gains without systems in place across the district.
So this would be the average data then that we're going to be using for those gains in 26, 27?
The state exams and the end-of-year data is what goes into the California Dashboard. All we're doing is looking at measures every quarter that will feed into that state data, right? So you get, you reduce the number of kids failing classes. Guess what? They probably know the content a little bit better when they sit for the state test, right? So that's why we're looking at those indicators that have impact on those state, those state scores.
Okay. I really do like what you said in your memo at the bottom of page 1, not weaponizing the information here. But it means asking, what, what do students need next? What do educators need next? And how can leadership remove barriers and strengthen the conditions for success? It kind of reminds me of this speech that I heard, what, so what, and now what? So here's where these SMART goals come in, and I think they're really important to communicate that across to everyone. I have a couple more here. I don't want to miss any.
And Mrs. Free, is your mic on? Okay.
It's green, but, uh, let's see here. How do we compare ourselves to other similar LA County districts like Downey Unified, Long Beach? You know, it would have been good to see those benchmarks to compare ourselves as well to other school districts and kind of get, you know, best practices from them as well. I know we have our owns, as you said, you know, some schools are doing outstanding. And obviously, we want to take that. But we also, I think it's important to look at other best practices with our neighboring districts. And so I see that our SMART goal of 10% annual benchmark improvements, do we have any concrete resources that we've already, or accountability measures that we've already implemented and taking steps to address that?
We have materials. One of the, again, I'm always going to go back to this baseline study, because this is not new information. There are certain materials that were created at the district level that were not mandatory. So all schools didn't use those resources or materials. And so we do have benchmarks that we use, and we've shared that benchmark data. But we do not have certain curriculum components at the district level that if I were a certain teacher in a certain grade level, that I would be required to use. And so we have to do a significant amount of time with our staff, our teachers, our leaders, our labor partners to be sober about that and then to do that, that work. But we do have benchmark data, but we shared, we shared that across the board. But in terms of resources and all of that, not, it was non-mandatory. That's one of the points in Arinda, the study. It was never mandatory. And again, not weaponizing it, that didn't start with staff that are currently here or staff that are transitioning, because this is a longstanding practice, that there was a level of autonomy and not a balance of looses and tights around what we have to use and what's working, what's not working.
Okay, and I want to, for example, take a look at slide 47. How do non-academic areas like chronic absenteeism and school climate indicators correlate with uneven academic results? And what strategies are we adapting to better perform? What strategies are we adapting from better-performing districts to tackle these overlooked interconnections, right? So we, we have in our district, right, 54%, 54.8% of our students either have a D or an F. It would have been great also to see what subject they're, they're lagging in, which subject they're getting a T or an F. Do we have, also coming back to this, do we have a district-wide grading policy or expectation for a consistent grading process?
So we do not have, there's a level of inconsistency across grading, right? So the data that you're referring to, principals have that. So there's a data tool that disaggregated, that where they're... So there's a data tool that where they're able to go in and look at which kids, which teachers, which, you know, what their attendance is and all of that. That's not, we don't, you know, we want staff to be able to work on that publicly. You know, we're not going to put out which kids and, you know, all of that. But that level of data is available to principals and their teams. So they do have an Excel tool that Dr. Sanchez graciously built out that allows for them to pull their ninth graders so that they have a sense of who and what and where that's happening. We also don't necessarily have, we have some district-wide practices across chronic absenteeism and Ds and Fs, but at the school site is where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. Knowing that Natasha doesn't show up, she's got a D and an F in a math class and a science class, and then the person at the school site is able to make the phone call, do the home visit, follow up. And some of those practices have been successful and others have not. But you couldn't say, even if you've been here 30 years, that every single school uses the same practice. It's just not the case.
Okay, I'm just thinking also, do our teachers need more support? Since we've taken away the TOSSAs, well, you know, since that has happened, and I know that there was work that they were doing, how did we provide direction or communicate how that work was going to be delegated? I'm just trying to think, what did these grades affect? Did taking away the TOSSAs affect part of this grade here?
I think it's a significant misnomer to say that you took away a staff member and a kid missed 30 or 40 days of school. That's not really why kids don't show up, right? And there was not a correlation or a connection between teachers on special assignment and our chronic absenteeism. You could not, unless you ran a full study, say that you had 20 teachers on special assignment, and that's impacted Ds or Fs. Kids who show up to school and are struggling are struggling for very different reasons, and the research does not point to one or two staff members. Our children are coming with some significant challenges beyond the classroom, and also there's a way to teach material that kids may struggle with. So I want us to be really careful about connecting, trying to draw conclusions around some really political personnel concerns that people rightfully have. But it's a misnomer to say that because I've asked folks to go teach in a classroom, that kids don't show up to school or they're failing a class. So I want to, I want to be careful about drawing that connection.
I'm not connecting that to absenteeism. I obviously know that there's, you know, it's something, whether it be from home or personal on the student. I'm just trying to connect, is there a lack of support where teachers, for example, if we turn to slide 81, suspensions, right? I think that's what I got here, suspensions. That's what I want to take a look at. Now, is there, you know, is the instructional time being affected by students who are disrupting classrooms and we're not really, we're not able to suspend because of state regulations? How are we supporting our teachers that are in these classrooms? Having to deal with students that are disrupting the classroom, taking away the instructional time from the teacher? And that's what I'm trying to connect here. Is that affecting our students, their instructional time, our teachers, on why we have more than 50% getting a D or an F in the ninth grade?
So you're saying, does behavior and is behavior in the class connected with performance? In some cases, perhaps this data cannot tell anybody that. So you cannot look at any data that we've provided and say, hey, these behaviors are impacting instruction. All the data does is says who has a D or F. It does not tell you why they have a D or an F. Even the suspensions, it's not disaggregated by who the nine kids are or what they did. So you actually can't look at this chart and say it happened in the classroom. So I think you're drawing some, you're doing some really great thinking around what's happening, but I want to be clear that this data in this format cannot tell you that. It just does not.
Well, this is only nine students, but because of state regulations, we can't. There are certain reasons why we can suspend, but, you know, so we have to not suspend the student even though they're being disruptive. So does nine really provide us with the number of students that really should have been suspended, but we can't no more, we have to continue to work with the student in the classroom?
Again, this data cannot, there's nothing that we pulled that can tell you that definitively. And if you, I think that's a great question. I think that it deserves an opportunity for those who are interested in that, and we're happy to help to perhaps do that research. But please be careful about drawing those assumptions around this, that's not what this can tell you.
I'm just asking, I'm not making an assumption, I'm just asking, is there a correlation?
Sorry, but just to clarify, state law, it prohibits admin and above from suspending for disruption. It specifically exempts teachers for that. Teachers are permitted to suspend for disruption up through 12th grade. It's very clear in state law. And we made it clear in our policy update last year when we incorporated it into state law. We incorporated the new state law into our board policy that it's, does not apply to teachers. So individual teachers still have the same rights. It's basically admin, you know, who else would be suspending on a school would be admin, that the disruption is no longer a, or defiance, sorry. Defiance is no longer a reason, but teachers still have the right.
I got a comment on the actual presentation just because, I mean, we're talking about the district, we're talking about different schools and so forth, but here, where we're in public, talking about everybody, and we're just showing suspensions and naming John Glenn and not other schools, I think at this point, I think we should have had maybe just a generic of all the schools instead of a logo and a name down there.
I think that we only went to this slide because of the question. I don't think we, so every school is in this slide deck, but we only went to this particular slide because of the question, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's also in the slide deck for the other schools. Yeah, but I understand, maybe let's just get off suspensions from John Glenn because John Glenn is worth, you know, it's a great school, they're doing great things, they had some gains last year, so, or the year before.
I just have a follow-up, Narsha, since you are in a position to know the answer to this. I don't know, historically, was it more admins that would process suspensions? And now it's teachers, and do teachers, are they aware?
I'm not in a position to answer that.
You're not?
I just clarified that the law did not apply to teachers.
That was very helpful.
That's my only clarification.
And, you know, again, that's a communication thing. We want to make sure our teachers know that they can't suspend for defiance, but they do have the power, the state.
They can, they still can, as always.
Okay, so that has not changed, and that, so teachers do feel supported that they still have that right. To me, it would seem like usually you'd send a student to the office, and some admin person would say, you know, oh, your teacher told me what you did, I'm going to suspend you, but I don't really know.
Yeah, well, there are numbers, you know, teachers are very skilled. You know, we go through our coursework, we know, we learn in our coursework, even in our practicums, how to de-escalate, right? So we know that suspension, while it is available to teachers, it, the more you kick a kid out, the less access they have to instruction, the more likely they are to drop out of school and not have access to a quality life. So for any teacher, you know, certificated teachers, we, I say we because we all have to be certified to be in these jobs, we know how to de-escalate, and when things get out of hand, you do have those levers you can pull, right? So that is available. But California wants to make sure that we're not obsessing or overly suspending, which is part of the rationale for that. But teachers do have that right. Dr. V?
Yeah, just a question and two comments, returning to academic performance, which is the most important in the school district in education. And one question, I guess that addresses Ms. Freeza, one of her concerns. She was concerned about the support for teachers. And I mentioned that earlier in my opening, that the schools need more support, the elementary schools, and that not just the certificated, classified as well, and students need additional support. And one way that I think that as we work through all of this, which is a long road ahead of us really, big task, will be to provide opportunities for professional development for certificated staff as well as paraprofessionals. And I also wanted to know, because I haven't found it yet, and it's the benchmarks by grade level on our websites.
So we, yeah. So we do not, as of yet, doesn't mean we can't. Some districts do post their curriculum maps and all that good stuff, so it's publicly available, it's easy to find. Some don't, we are, that hasn't been our practice to post. Obviously, this is public information, but right now, you know, it's a little hard to find on our site, so we haven't posted results or anything like that in a way that's easily accessible, if that makes sense. It hasn't been a past practice.
Yeah, a lot hasn't been a past practice, it seems. But anyway, and then an observation and a comment is that as I, as I examined all of these resources, and so I made your work worthwhile, I did examine all of it. I understood the next steps. And something that I think is missing in the next steps is increasing expectations and for all of those to align across the district. Increasing expectations, mainly in literacy, early literacy, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Miska?
I'm going to be short, okay, I promise. So for me, it's just some comments. We really need to be uniformed. It's horrible. I've been here the longest, and we're not uniformed, and it's sad to see that we're not. It would be nice, this would be easier for us to understand if we were uniformed. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, we do see uniformity across all our schools because it is important, it's vital, or else we're going to have this long meetings every time we meet. Uniformity is important. Making sure we be, that we are looking at the support that we're giving our teachers, our certified and classified employees, because they need support in order to be able to help us and support us with bringing our kids to the next level. But I do have a question with suspension, suspensions. Do we know what grade we see it mostly in? Or what grade level are we seeing more of the suspensions?
We have 63, I believe, during first quarter. We didn't do grade level analysis, we only did school-level analysis. But if the board would like that grade-level analysis.
I think it would be important for us to see. Schools, well, it would be nice to know what grade level, so that way we know if those, that H group is the one that needs the most support, and it might be a middle school, or it might be high school. I don't think we have that many in elementary, I'm hoping, but I know we do.
Well, with high school, right? So, I mean, ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th. I mean, I'm thinking, hopefully not seniors.
The slide you referenced was specifically just John Glenn. However, on top of each school getting their individual suspensions, we did do a district-level analysis of suspension rates.
Okay.
Yeah.
My last question is, what is our next plan, okay, in supporting our struggling students? So are we going to have a zero periods? Are we going to have Saturday school? Because we're almost ending the year. So how are we going to support the students that are not doing as great or having the Ds and Fs? How are we going to help them move to getting DCs for the next quarter?
So we have some next steps in general for this work. Would you like us to share that now, or do we want to continue with some of the board questions?
Well, I think this is important because it's an action, and we want to make sure that we're moving forward. And if they're struggling, how are we going to help them, how are we going to support them?
Next steps, please.
I'll go and pass it to.
Just like Mr. Vios?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. What are our actions for our next steps? And how does that look like supporting our entire staff, teachers, certificated, and just pretty much everyone who puts a touch in our students and classrooms, outside classrooms? I mean, it comes down to everyone, even our office support and, you know, just those steps. Give us an idea what we will be looking at and how, including that, we take everyone, I guess collaboration, I'm going to call it collaboration, and I'm going to call it unity of our partners also working together so we can get to the same.
Thank you, definitely collaboration. And I think as we move through gathering all this data and best practices, is continue to align that not only by site but through the district. The other thing is looking at the interventions, especially around tier one. I think it's very important because if we can capture the students in tier one and provide those resources that are necessary, A, we keep them out of tier two, tier three, but then we get to develop the skills that they need in order to move on to the next grade level. Continue to work with the socio-emotional components. I know we have wellness coordinators, a lot of our sites, the counselors, the ESS are supporting and kind of going in and evaluating what needs our students need in order to be successful. Continue to work and tighten our vertical alignment through grade levels. And so that's something that we saw with some of the principals we met is the schools that were, did well. There was definitely strong vertical alignment. And one of the other things is also continue to revamp, revise, and strengthen our curriculum maps, pacing guides, and our benchmarks. So just, those are just a few steps that we're looking to continue, yes?
Ms. Maggaja, would you please explain to my colleagues here, give them examples of what constitutes tier one, tier two, and tier three? Because I think you're referring to return to response intervention in the different tiers and how those practices should be utilized or implemented in the classroom. And you were focusing on mainly tier one, so just give us examples of what tier one classroom practices are and strategies.
Well, for example, tier one can be the use of common formative assessments and going through a cycle of increase. So are students learning? If they are, what are we going to do next? If students are not learning, what are we going to do next? And then building those foundations for, you know, our students, whether it be small groups, doing reteaching, and, you know, just continue to assess where those students are. If they're moving into tier two, that means that you've done all the strategies in tier one, and then it might have to be more focused, smaller groups, you know, again, interventions, and assessing where the students are, not only through benchmarks, but again, you know, on a regular basis. And then tier three, that's when you get into more, what I call the red zone. So you've done all these interventions, so we might have to do a 504, we might have to do a SST on a student. And so again, it's just always evaluating where those students are at. And you do that by consistently looking at data.
Thank you. And it also is really the beginning and the ends of that cycle, instructional cycle, because we begin with assessing, establishing that baseline, and then the interventions, right? The classroom practices, the interventions, and then we retest. That just shows, underscores the importance of formative assessments or frequent progress monitoring, right?
Those things like tickets.
That's the importance of that.
Yes.
And grouping strategies and classroom management to be able to be more prescriptive with those groups, those smaller groups that you're working with. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Okay, I did have a couple of questions. So I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Baker and Ms. Maggania, the goal for this school year is, we put the cards on the table, see where we're at. Sorry, and to come up with common curriculum maps, pacing guides by the end of this school year so that we can implement it in 26, 27?
In an ideal world, we would have some looses and some tights. Right now, they, you know, folks don't necessarily have to use our district-wide curriculum maps, and there are a lot of incomplete maps and pacing guides, right? And so I was able to show some of you guys that. So in an ideal world, right, we'd leverage our schools that are, they already have some built-out systems. We get everybody into a room who has impact and who, not who has impact, but teachers, you know, staff, other staff, parents even, and really be sober about who's doing what well, and try to get people to come to some agreement around what it should look like for the district that would help not just the high flyers, the high-functioning schools, but schools that, you know, are struggling to know which maps and guides to use. And so part of our quarter-one meetings with principals and me and Ms. Maggania is we wanted people to be honest about, you know, what they were struggling with at their sites, especially those schools that have declined. So yes, in an ideal world, we do all that work to. Um, so yes, in an ideal world, we do all that work together and we'd be able to say, okay, for next year, here's what we're doing. We're going to commit to this and have that be an organic process. So that's not something like I would need to lead, right? It has to be led by the folks doing the work. Um, and we want to figure out how to do that in a way that doesn't pull people out of classrooms, um, to do it. Because we need them at the same time to, to, uh, you know, be teaching their, to be teaching our students. But in an ideal world, yes, we'd go into next year with everyone understanding what our curriculum is, our pacing guides, you know, our site words and all of that good stuff, our assessments, um, and we'd all be on the same page. Alignment requires some relationship building, as you can tell, um, because folks have to, you know, come to the, everybody's got to come to the middle to do the work. So that's, that's the ultimate goal.
And I, I think that would be essential to having, to having a baseline here. We can't have a baseline here when we have such disparate times, like, you know, the core assessments that are, yes, the numbers are low, but they're literally given in some schools before, before there's any instruction, zero. So what do you, you know, it's what they happen to learn from home and others are, are, uh, you know, a month in. And so having a, a, um, the numbers don't mean much when they're so.
So much variation.
So much variation and when they're, when they come in. So having, like she said, uniformity, not uniformity for the sake of uniformity.
Right.
Cause then it's, you know, it's also lowest common denominator. We don't want that. Uh, u- uniformity for the sake of, let's look at best practices. And, you know, I was a teacher in the district for a long time and it's the same at every, every, uh, I'm sure, you know, the, in education wide, uh, you get comfortable, right? I've been doing this for a long time. It works for me. And because it's all I know and all I've, all I've seen, you just get like, well, that's, that's what you get. Whereas seeing others, the opportunity to collaborate and see others with, um, that are getting other results. And it's not just, we can't just say, well, it's SES. That, that's just not true.
Right.
There, there are schools that have a different socioeconomic status that, uh, that are getting, you know, great results. So we can't just, we can't just pin it on that. But I think it's really important to have the collaboration time and, and, uh, the, um, that the, this uniform thing doesn't, doesn't just, you know, like you said, come from on high because then it's going to be very difficult to get buy-in. That's going to require a lot of collaboration with our, uh, labor partners and, uh, teachers that are in the trenches and, you know, know what works, what doesn't, but also can be encouraged with other teachers that, you know, have you tried this? That, you know, this is what we do here. I think it would be important to both, both make it a, a plan to, to get this done by the end of the year and to make sure that that's done in collaboration with, with teachers. The second, my second question was, um, regarding high school. Um, I was, I had the opportunity to be at the, uh, K-12, uh, breakfast, uh, with Cerritos College along with Esri and Ms. Maggada and, uh, Dr. Jung. They mentioned that they're going to be doing universal dual enrollment. Uh, I believe starting in the spring, I believe they're even, they want to start with, uh, El Camino. Uh, where every student become, is, you know, by default, a college student with a college ID and everything. How will that help? You know, how will, uh, getting us more and more into dual enrollment and universal dual enrollment in the sense that a student doesn't have to jump through a bunch of hoops, that, that they are automatically enrolled in, in some college class and therefore already think of themselves as, I am college material. I'm right now, I'm taking a college class. How do we perceive that impacting our performance over the next few years? The, the part, a partnership with, uh, Cerritos College specifically?
I think exposing students to college, I mean, first, I mean, I know I've had a couple of conversations, uh, with Ms. Esri about that. We're a product of that.
I have a couple more ideas too, I want to share with you.
And one thing they kept, uh, discussing is exposing students to the possibilities. And so for them to be able to go and, you know, get a college ID and maybe experience that first class can, uh, change the trajectory of, uh, their future. So how do I think it's going to impact? I think it can only be positive, exposing students to different, um, uh, curriculum. I mean, whether it's a student who may be interested in psychology, they can take a psychology class and, and continue with, with their high school, um, going through the, you know, getting their high school diploma. So I, I just think the possibilities are endless in regards to, uh, students being exposed to, um, higher education.
Thank you. And sorry, just one, one more question. Um, uh, Dr. Sanchez, could you, there is a slide way at the beginning that mentioned A through G. And, um, the number didn't, I, the number, I didn't understand the number because it, it can't mean that ninety-two percent of our kids are A through G. I know it's far less than that, but the number said ninety-two in that bar graph. So if you could just explain the bar. There you are.
Yeah, so what this says is that of the students who were prepared, who were considered prepared, um, I need to turn around because my eyesight is shot here. Ninety-two point eight percent of them were considered prepared because they met A through G. That doesn't mean that's the only reason they're considered prepared, because they can also meet other criteria, like these, a large majority of these students probably also are counted within the students who got a three or four on the CASP as well.
Do you know, uh, right now, what, just as a very basic number, kind of what percentage of our students do graduate A through G?
It, it's usually between forty-eight and fifty, fifty-one percent, around there.
Thank you. Okay, so that, so these numbers here are of the students who were prepared, they did it through this method.
Correct.
It's not the percentage of the students who met.
No, it's a percentage of a percentage. And again, that's something that I wish they did it a little differently because it, it does, uh, complicate how people interpret it. This here is just the percentage of students who are considered prepared overall. That is a true percentage.
Okay, so those, so for example, of, of these percentages, A through G completion is a subset of this.
Is a subset of that.
So at most, for example, fifty-six point nine, uh, were A through G, at most, and so on. Okay.
No, uh, fifty-six point nine at La Mirada are considered prepared by meeting one of the multiple.
So it's going to be that or less that are A through G?
Correct. Can I be, that one of these exceeds that, correct?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one last question. Now, uh, these SMART goals, I mean, is it doable to be able to communicate them by the end of the year? And, uh, have a, a, a process, uh, that our teachers can follow?
Absolutely. This is not the first time I feel, I understand how some people feel. It's a perspective, it's a narrative. You may recall that we worked on these goals last, last year. Um, we spent summertime working with staff. We connected with the community. Principals had to submit their agendas to both me and Ms. Maggada. That showed us they were going over the material with their staff, their teachers. So the district-wide goals have been discussed at every level in the organization, from a director who's even in nutrition services to a classroom teacher, from the principal, if they're a classroom teacher, if they have been in attendance, when the, the principal has gone through that. So yes, I think this is very doable. Um, when we disaggregate the data with our teams, we're seeing progress. We're paying attention every quarter, so changes can be made. But I want to just, uh, reiterate that the board approved these goals last semester and throughout the summer, beginning of the year. I mean, we've got documentation that show what every single principal went over because they had to submit their agendas to both me and Ms. Maggada. And we reviewed them, uh, because we had some feedback. So, um, yes, I do think it, these are achievable goals.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Villar.
Thank you. Um, the A through G pathway, is that the one that's the most conducive to maximizing dual enrollment opportunities?
Oh, that's a tricky question.
It's a good question.
I, I have something in mind, that's why, that I've been working on.
I, I would say that students who are on track to meet A through G are taking dual enrollment courses in way higher percentages than those not meeting A through G. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking about an innovative way to add an early childhood, um, uh, certification, uh, partnering with Cerritos College. And it probably fits better with A through G and it'll maybe impact enrollment and enhance our partnership with them. Uh, again, I, it'll require, um, conversations between like us and them, uh, not just for the, like, becoming a dual student, but also like accessibility for the coursework. Accessibility will be not just financially, but physically or whatever, um, the, uh, uh, modality will be. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
But, uh, Ms. Ling, Walter?
Great. Um, uh, let's see, Dr. Baker, I just had a question about what your thoughts are as far as moving forward with this, uh, assembling this cohort that's going to be working on filling in the gaps for the curriculum maps and the pacing guides.
So, um, we're not, um, in position right now to say, here's how we're going to do that. Because there are some conversations I need to have first. There are some folks with some really strong skill sets in the district, school sites, at the district level. Um, and so what this data is designed to do is just say, here's where we are. And we've got to go back now that everybody has heard this and then we've got to have some conversations and bring some folks together to, to do that work. Um, and some of that will include obviously making sure the board is in the loop in terms of who's doing what. But we certainly don't want to do that in isolation, which is why, you know, I'm not saying, well, you know, Sky is going to do this part on the map. And, you know, Jean is going to do this part. We're just not there yet. We wanted to first just do exactly what Arinda said, which is you got to put everything on the table first. Cause folks don't really know what's getting the gains at some of the schools in Nor, whether it's in Norwalk or La Mirada. The details around that had, those conversations are not being had, um, and at a level that where those practices, those best practices are adopted. So we do have some idea about how to do that work, um, but we really need to go back and have some conversations. Again, yes, with labor partners and there are a lot of teachers and a lot of staff who may not necessarily be engaged in, you know, um, in the bargaining unit, but they are knocking it out of the park in their classrooms, right? So we want to be very inclusive in which teachers and how we tap some of those folks who are getting gains with kids. I say all that to say, I'll have to follow up with you. Um, I would be remiss to put that out there now when I need to go back and have conversations now that we've kind of put this into the space.
Yeah, really, I'm thinking about who, who, who's available to do it, who's willing to put that extra work in. Some people aren't focused at that level, um, but they will follow it if it's put out there. And also the timeframe that we're looking at, we don't want this to drag on forever.
Yes.
It needs to be very defined, so.
We need to get it, yes, we need to get the gaps filled, for sure.
Yeah.
Lot of work needed.
Um, is there any else to the presentation or?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for all that hard work. Uh, there's a huge team effort by a lot of people. Thank you. And I know that, uh, not just compiling the six hundred something slides, but, uh, meeting, a lot of individual meetings, uh, to make this happen and a lot of individual, uh, a lot of hard work. So thank you. We're going to take a, a five-minute break and then, uh, come back to our, the second part of our, uh, board presentations. Thank you. Thank you.
No, no, I don't care. There you go.
One of those things is it pays a compliment to the district's board and staff. Because you are making difficult decisions to ensure that the operations of the districts are sound in terms of maintaining sufficient reserve fund, in terms of maintaining your expenses at a certain level, and being mindful about your revenues that you see from state and other sources. The other things that the rating analysts have paid a compliments to you is your prudent fiscal management in terms of your ability to project in the future years. Because to the rating analysts and the investor community, that's very important. It's not only important for you to be fiscally sound today, but they would also like to know where your financial situations will be in the out years. And those were some of the things that attributed to your credit rating upgrade. Now, just to put it into context, you might be asking yourself, well, what does a double A minus and a double A three mean? I would say whenever a credit rating analyst evaluates a school district's creditworthiness, there are 11 different outcomes. But those 11 different outcomes can be grouped into three categories. First is a high credit rating, second is a middle credit rating, and the third is a low credit rating. Now that we are firmly in or within the double A category, I would consider us and the investors would consider us to be in the high credit rating. Now, what does that mean for the taxpayers? So that translates into this, lower interest costs. Similar to when you might be applying for a new mortgage loan or auto loan, and a bank might check your FICO score, and depending on your FICO score, they will assign an appropriate interest rate. Similar concept applies to municipal bonds or school bonds. The higher your credit rating, the lower the interest rates on your bonds. Lower the interest rate on your bonds translates into a lower tax rate for the taxpayers within our school districts. So I thought I'd cover that here for you. Now, we touched briefly on Measure G. We said that Measure G, while the community was generous enough to support a $375 million bond package, we didn't take all of those bond authorizations in one draw. We took numerous draws over the past 10 years. And the reason why we take these numerous draws are because each bond draw is designated for a specific purpose or set of projects it's meant to address. And each bond draw, when being formulated, we take into consideration the useful life of those projects as well. Meaning, we like to use long-term repayment bonds, typically 25- to 30-year life bonds, to repay or finance projects which will have a useful life of greater than that. For instance, you wouldn't want to finance, use 25-year bonds to finance 3-year iPads. So we're mindful about that. That's one of the reasons why your bond draws are broken up. The other reason why it's drawn up is because these are being financed under what are called tax exempt interest rates, which is the lowest form of interest rates that's available to a school district like ours. One of the requirement is that you have to have a reasonable belief that you can spend the bond draw within three years. So we wouldn't want to overdraw on our bond authorization when we know or we don't believe that we wouldn't be able to spend that money in time. So that's another reason why we piece out these bond draws. So I've just outlined here for you some of the historical activities under Measure G. That red rectangular in 2026, the proposed Series G, is about $20 million. And this $20 million is designated for the following projects. One, I believe it's designated to be spent on roofing, which is about $18 million. And then the remaining $2 million is designated for replenishing the underground fuel storage tank. So those are the two projects that are earmarked and identified to be refinanced, I'm sorry, to be financed with Measure G bonds. One of the other things that I would like to mention here is that why is it important for us to identify these projects? We mentioned about the useful life. We want to make sure that the repayment period of the bonds is greater than, shorter than the useful life of the projects. But not only that, the investors and the credit rating analysts will ask us, what are these bond proceeds being used for? And we will identify for them, XYZ projects are identified to be financed with this $20 million. So the credit rating agencies are aware of that. And through the credit rating analysts, the investors are aware of your intention with the $20 million. And then, part of the documentation is to comply with that rule, to make sure that our bonds qualify for that tax exempt bonds. It gets built in to the legal documents. That's why it's very important for us to identify the projects at the onset of the financing. After we draw this $20 million, we will have about $81 million remaining in our authorization. And that amount will be available to the district at your disposal whenever you might need the next draw from Measure G to finance whatever projects you might have coming up. So that's your decision, that's the board's decision, and staff will take direction from you as to when to take that draw. One other thing I'll mention here is that every time you take a bond draw, we will come before you to the board. It's legally required for us to come back to the board, share with you information, and seek your formal approval before taking a bond draw. The last two lines there, those are just the tax rates. The current tax rate is $50.06 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. And then, while the legal maximum is $60, our tax rate is clocking in under that. And that's one of the reasons behind that is because our assessed valuation grew by more than what we had originally planned. As a planning tool for Measure G, we had used a 4% average annual growth rate. And if you look at the top of this chart, the district's average annual growth rate has been above 5%. So that's allowing us to take these draws without going over the $60 tax rate. Mr. Santiago mentioned about a potential refinancing. You know, the district's board and staff has been very good about demonstrating good fiscal stewardship of public funds by always monitoring for potential refinancing opportunities. And the time to look at these refinancing opportunities might be when we are taking new bond draws for these reasons. One, it economizes on costs. So instead of paying for consultants like myself and my colleague here twice to do two separate transactions, you'll pay us once to do one combination financing. The other is, every time you do a refinancing, you deliver all of the savings back to the community. None of the savings come back to the district. It does not go to benefit your general fund. It doesn't go to pay for raises or anything like that. 100% of the benefits go straight to the taxpayers. One thing that I will highlight about the refinancing is that unlike a home mortgage refinancing, where we might replace our 30-year mortgage with a new 30-year mortgage, a general obligation bond is slightly different than that. We would never extend the term of the repayment period. So for instance, if you look at here, the final year of the bond maturity for this particular series is 2045. So if we were to undertake a new refinancing, we will ensure that any new repayment period for this portion would remain shorter than 2045. So I wanted to just mention that as well. And while this particular set of bonds do not generate refinancing savings at this moment, we will continue to monitor for savings. And if there is savings, we will make sure to include it as part of the refinancing package or the new financing package. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleague and partner, Mr. Richard Calibro.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Calibro, Piper Sandler, I'm the district's financial advisor. Everything that Jin has just described to you all, I'm going to verify. My job is to make sure we comply with what the voters had approved. And that is not to go over a $60 tax rate. That's our legal limit. So we're going to put forth a plan to investors. We want to make sure our assumptions behind this plan meets everybody's needs for the community, as well as the school board, as well as the district. Eduardo has put forth that he needs $20 million for projects. We're going to make sure that that is communicated to the investors, as well as to the rating agencies. We're going to be meeting with the rating agency in January to discuss the district's financials, their tax base. Why is their tax base growing? How are we going to spend the money? We're going to make sure that this unique credit story is delivered to the rating agency, and we maintain this double A minus. It's very important, as Jin had mentioned, that the credit upgrade is going to save us interest dollars. And we want to make sure, we're going to put together a 25-page presentation to S&amp;P and make sure that we go through financial management over the tax base, how we're going to spend the money. When's the possibility of coming back to S&amp;P for the next batch of bonds? These are all the stories that S&amp;P analysts are going to want to hear from us when we meet with them in January. So to go over our timeline, today we're doing the informational session. In the meantime, your bond counsel, Stradling, will put together a bond resolution that will put forth all the parameters. The size of our bond, the maximum interest rate. And everything that you need to come forth in December, you're going to approve. And I am going to follow those orders. I'm going to take a look at the resolution to make sure that those bonds are sold based on what the board has approved in December of next month. Also, what's important is the preliminary official statement. The preliminary official statement is going to be like a 60-page document that's going to go over all the finances of the school district. It's going to go over the tax bases of the school district. But it's a very important document, because why? This is what bond investors are going to read. Why are we going to invest in Norwalk-Lamarada's school district bonds? So this is another very important document that's going to be presented to the board next month. That's the second document you're going to approve. The third thing is what we call a continuing disclosure agreement. You might have seen this before. But this is an agreement that you will, well, we, will provide bond investors going forward. Each year, we make a commitment to bond investors that we're going to update them every March. What's going on with the school district? And there's an annual disclosure form that we put together. We put that report together, we work with Eduardo, and we put that forth to investors each year. We also have a step in the process that you have to go to LA County. LA County approves a resolution for these bonds to be levied on the tax base. So we need to go through that process with them. They formally approve a bond resolution, which will occur in January. We cannot sell bonds until that task has been taken care of. But the process will be about 30 to 60 days. We hope to have the bonds sold in January, which is very important. Why is that important? Jin can share. It's typically, not a lot of bonds are sold in January. We'll be the first one out of the gates come 2026. Not a lot of supply means we can get lower interest rates. People want to put their money to work. So the quicker we get in front of bond investors, not a lot of supply, we'll be able to take advantage of lower interest rates come January and hopefully close by the end of February to provide the school district the $20 million that they need.
I know that that was a lot of information. We're happy to answer any questions that the board or staff might have.
I have a quick question. Can you clarify the total repayment amount, the total cost that will be on taxpayers, including principal and interest, by 2045? What's going to be the total?
Sure. So for this upcoming Measure G bonds, that $20 million, the current estimate is that for $20 million of principal, we may repay about $23 million in interest. So in aggregate, about $43 million. Now, that's an estimate, and it could change depending on where interest rates are next year. Rough rule of thumb, generally, if you do a math, which is called a repayment ratio. And it's principal, face amount of the bonds, plus interest divided by the principal. Roughly, for a typical bond issue like ours, it's between two, just around 2 to 1, or 2.2 to 1 or so. And another point of reference, the state of California put in force sort of best practices or requirements for a general obligation bond. And the repayment ratio that we just spoke about, that repayment ratio cannot be greater than 4 to 1. So any bond issue that's below that is not only a demonstration of a successful financing, but it's good governance and demonstration that your financing has a reasonable repayment ratio. Meaning, that interest component isn't too much greater than the actual principal.
And then you said we're going to be pulling the $20 million for the roof and for the transportation tank, which we approved a couple of months ago now. How soon after do we have to wait to pull more bond money?
You will most likely, so I will. So most likely, you'll have to wait about another two to three years before you can draw the next bond amount. And that's done intentionally. Because remember, in order for us to qualify for that tax exempt interest rate, we need to have a reasonable expectation that we can spend this $20 million over the next two, next three years. So that's why we intentionally identify two to three years from now as the next bond draw.
And then you said it's going to be a savings for taxpayers with this refinance. Can you explain a little bit more on that?
Of course. So this is a potential set of bonds which might be refinanced along with this next Measure G bond draw. As you can see here, on the very right column, we listed the old interest rates. So what we will be doing is, as we continue to progress forward with this Measure G financing, and we see that our new potential bond interest rate is lower than these old interest rates, then what we'll do is we'll replace or refinance these old bonds with new refinancing bonds at the lower interest rate. So essentially, we're replacing the higher old interest rates with newer lower interest rates. And the delta between those two interest rates is what we hope to generate the savings from.
Thank you.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you so much for the information. My question was, so, taking this draw of $20 million, how much will the average? Well, I'd ask also for you to define the boundary of who will be involved in repaying it. I don't know if that's a county boundary, a district boundary. And also, what the average household, how much this $20 million draw will affect their property tax?
Sure. So the first question related to the boundary, it's everyone within the school district's boundary. So if you're getting a tax bill, if you're a property owner within the school district receiving a property tax bill, you will pay taxes on the bonds. In terms of how much you will be paying, the projection is that after this issuance of the $20 million, the tax rate will be at the $60 or just slightly under the $60 per $100,000 assessed valuation. Now, that's a very important distinction there. Because many of us, my wife and my friends included, when they think about their property tax bills, they immediately think about how much their home is worth today. So if your home is worth $800,000 or $900,000 or $1 million, they might just equate, okay, I'm going to just multiply 60 by 10, because it's per $100,000. That's not the right way to do it. The assessed valuation always trail market value. So while you can sell your home for $1 million or $800,000 today, really, the taxes are being levied on what you might have bought your home for. Obviously, the nuances, we have to factor in Prop 13, which is that 2% yearly increase. But generally, you just look at what you purchased your home for. Whenever you did, you compounded by 2% per year, that's your taxable value. So most school districts, that value lags by five, six, seven years. So I would imagine in our district, probably that middle value, maybe $450,000. I'm just estimating that at the back of the envelope. I can get back to you with the exact figure. But let's say it's $400,000, right? Then you just multiply by 6, that's $240 per year. If it's $500,000, then it's $300. So I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions? I just had a kind of a more general level question.
Sure.
You know, when you get a home mortgage, your credit rating matters because you're the one paying it.
Yes.
Here, our credit rating matters, but we're not the ones paying it. So just, why does our credit rating matter when we're not the ones paying it? Is it because we can be trusted to use the money wisely? Is that the idea?
That is one of the reasons. So when you read these credit rating reports by Standard &amp; Poor's and the other major credit rating agencies, Moody's Investor Service, they pay a heavy attention to the following things. One, the economy or social demographics of the district, the wealth level of our community. That's important to them because it measures how, what their ability might be to repay taxes. So that's one. The other is district management. They look at that, and that was the primary driver behind your last rating increase. It's the management of the board, management by staff, that's extremely important. And then, third is what I call the financial statistics of the district. So it's about your financial reports, your audits, your interim reports, your budgets. Those are all very important. So yes, short answer to your question is yes, it is important. The rating analysts evaluate it because they want to make sure that you're, number one, being run responsibly, and that your community can demonstrate the repayment of these taxes by looking at those economic statistics.
And then my second question is, you mentioned property tax. Sorry, property owners, but I guess this would affect rents too. Because obviously, a landlord who has a higher property tax may need then to raise rent in order to, so in other words, affects everybody. It's not just homeowners, it affects everybody because it's likely to.
Theoretically, yes, it would be passed down in forms of an increased rent potentially.
Okay. And then, the increase you're talking about is this growth rate basically depends on not just the 2% automatic, but how many, the real estate market, basically. The more homes sell and upgrade to the higher assessed value, the more, the more we can get, basically.
You're absolutely right. So you may notice that we kept, we mentioned about Prop 13, 2%. But at that top number right there, that 5.27%, you might wonder, well, how do we grow 5, over 5% if Prop 13 limits us at 2%? That goes to your point. Every time there's a turnover in a property owner, whether it be residential, commercial, light industrial, all those distribution centers we have in our district, every time a new property owner takes ownership of that property, they get assessed at that then-current market. And those are one of the catalysts behind greater than 2% assessed valuation growth.
And then, sorry, one final question. You know, I hope I'm not skipping ahead too much because the next one talks about needing an additional 5.4%. And you were looking at a possible different fund to take that out of, for the roofing. What is the possibility from the financial perspective of just upping the bond to 25.4 million and therefore not having to borrow from other funds?
Sure. I can start that, and maybe Mr. Calibro can finish off. One of the, I could say there, if you were to take a larger than what we have originally planned, which is, we currently planned a $20 million bond draw. If you take a larger than the originally planned draw, if you accelerate the bond, what we'll have to, something has to give in the backend. Meaning, your next bond draw, instead of two to three years from now, it might be three to four years, or it might be four to five years from now. Not only that, it may also influence the amount. So if you draw a larger amount today, so let's say if we add another $4 million to our package, that doesn't necessarily equate dollar for dollar at the future bond draw in terms of how quickly you can. It may actually mean that if you want to draw $4 million today, you may have to wait longer to draw the $4 million in the future. So you may be able to draw $3 million three years from now, and then another $1 million five years from now. So it really pushes out the finish line of your plan. Did you want to add anything to that?
As you can see, we're at the cap of $60. So we're at a $50 tax rate. So we're limited to only $10 to work with.
Would, sorry. Would another 5.4 million? Because apparently, that's what the district, people that look at this say we need extra to do with the projects. Would that take us over 60? Another 5.4 million would take us over 60?
Yeah, it would take us over, yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question.
So, one quick question, obviously, with the refinance, what numbers are we looking at to refinance?
That's a great question. So that is a decision that we will work with the business office, Mr. Santiago's office, to arrive at. Typically, a school district may set a certain percentage. Maybe 3%, maybe 4% or 5%. Other school districts have said, well, their costs associated with doing the refinancing. So let's make sure that the savings are greater than the costs. And those are some of the business decisions that we will have to make together. Now, in the past, some districts have said, let's forget the percentage, let's forget the cost, let's just do the refinancing. Because it was one of those things where it was a now or never, now or never. We think the interest rates are low enough now. A bird in hand is worth two in a bush, let's just take it. So those are some of the factors that will work with Mr. Santiago's office. So I couldn't give you a definitive answer now because it really depends on a number of different factors.
And interest rates are not the greatest right now.
It has not been. It has not been. And as you know, as, you know, in an effort to combat inflation, Federal Reserve Board has raised interest for a number of years in the past. It has most recently decided to lower interest rates. So our expectation is that the Federal Reserve Board might continue to do that. December, it remains to be seen where the Federal Reserve Board might go. So we'll continue to monitor that. But you're right, interest rates are not as low as they were during the early years of COVID, when we saw historically low interest rates.
And so although the interest rate won't change, it will lock it in, obviously, the amount that taxpayer will pay, obviously, they'll increase at times because of refinancing or new home purchasing. Those will affect
Yes.
the community.
I just want to add, there is another partner is part of this process, and that's the Los Angeles County Treasurer's Office. They're very active. So when we go to sell bonds, they are part of the conversation. We will get their input. They're in the market all the time. They'll tell us their opinion in terms of our bond sale as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ms. Walter?
One more, sorry, it's a small thing. But the repayment period for, like we said, on average, a homeowner's got a home that's got assessed value of around $450,000 will pay $250,000, $300,000 more a year in their property taxes. And so at the end of the repayment term, does that go away?
That's right.
Okay. And what is the repayment term?
So, right now, we're budgeting a 30-year repayment period from today. So for the new Series G bonds, we'll have a 30-year repayment period. The future series of bonds, it's yet to be determined.
Okay.
And I would like to just cover that. $250,000, that's the total tax bill. It's not the increase, but that's total for Measure G, for all of the bonds issued today.
In other words, not an increase just for the new one that they want to do, it's back from 2015 to here?
Yeah.
If we didn't take the draw, there wouldn't be a change. Well, I mean, there would be a change to property tax. But if we take the draw, there will be an increase
That's right.
of 250?
No, 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 no. $250 is the aggregate tax bill that the homeowners are, will be paying for all of the Measure G.
Oh, for all of these, okay. Actually, I was interested
The incremental increase?
in knowing just how much this draw will increase your average homeowner.
I would say it's a couple of dollars per $100,000. So it's very minuscule, that 250.
Okay, so the 250, 300, that's what we're paying on the whole Measure G that Norwalk-Lamarada? Oh, that's good, that's better.
Yeah.
And Mr. Yost? I just want to thank you for the presentation. But as we sit, I mean, we're just barely going to start getting the new reports coming in. I guess Thursday, the first one for employment and not waiting till the holidays. I don't think we're going to see anything, although they keep promising they're going to get down. I know that everybody's heard, right? So everybody calls me, oh, they're down already. No, for real estate, they're actually gone up and back down. So, you know, it all depends on the timing, and it all depends on, it's all political. And it's the way the political arena's playing, it's the way everything else is going to play. And so for now, I don't see anything moving for a while. But like they say, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, you are paying and will keep paying those who, I pay two taxes because I own two taxes here in Norwalk, right? But that's just the way it goes. I mean, I mean, but as far as this goes, I I think, I mean, keeping us on track and keeping us the way it is. I mean, we did promise that we couldn't, we wouldn't pay more than so much to the constituents. And that's, I think, part of what we just need to stick to. Otherwise, when we go out for another bond, it's like, no.
Yeah, I I just don't want to mislead taxpayers. That's it. So when we're pulling more money and more money, I, you know, we can lose that trust. There's concerns about transparency on bond spending, and people don't want to pay higher taxes.
Cool. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. He is here.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. Our next presentation, it's on Phase 1E. And on this presentation, we are identifying, we are identifying and recommending which roofs, which school sites we will be working on the re-roofing. And then we also want to explain how we came up with this extra 5.4 million dollars from from the ELOP. Because the idea was since ELOP allows us to pay for these capital improvements, is to be more proactive and to do as many roofs as we can. Now, again, this is just a recommendation. And then we have another item, once we go through the agenda, as an action item, because we are connecting with the with the consultants. So and as you can see, all the all the deadlines are established. And at this point, we're going to have our director, Facilitative Planning and Construction, Edith Florence. And then we also have Buzz Mitchell. And they really have gone through all all the roofings and then what methodology was used to identify these schools. So so go ahead, Edith, please.
Thank you, Swarto. Good evening, Board President Brasov, Dr. Cencio. Board members, Dr. Baker, executive staff, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and provide this bond program update. There you go. Yes, I will be presenting an update on Phase 1E. Talk about approved project and funding. Talk about the methodology and explain the priorities and provide a recommendation to the board. So as you may recall, on March 24th, Measure G, Phase 1E, we approved two projects, the district-wide re-roofing and for the Transportation Department, underground storage tanks. As Jin mentioned, this is going to be per our bond issuance, Series G, for a total of $20 million. So to go through some of the methodology, I'm going to take these a little bit out of order. So right now, we have a current analysis of all of our roofs district-wide. The analysis currently shows that if we wanted to re-roof all of the sites tomorrow, we would need $38 million. And we only have 18 million in this issuance, which is why we put together these priorities. Priorities 1, 2, and 3 sites represent 37% of the permanent buildings. That's just to give you kind of an idea of how much improvement we'll be able to make. So it's about 37%.
I'm sorry, 37% of the ones on this slide or of the whole district?
Of the whole district.
Oh, wow.
Wanted to note a couple of things. We are currently leasing 35 modular buildings, portables, as most most of you know them as. For leased portables, if we have any issues regarding leaks, those are repaired by the leasing company. Every year, towards the beginning of the year in the spring, we walk the sites and we take an assessment. Sometimes the carpet needs to be replaced, sometimes the ceiling tiles need to be replaced. And we tell the the leasing or the lesor, and they come out and they do those repairs. The district owns 240, I'm sorry, 214 modular buildings. Those are our responsibilities. If there are leaks in any of those portables, then we work with Buzz and myself here on the list. Just to give you an example, some sites you will not see on this list because they have been recently re-roofed. So for example, the canopies at Huerta were re-roofed and the building in 2023. So you will not see Huerta on this list. So kind of going back to the methodology, some of the things that we took into consideration is, first of all, the highest need. There's roofs that have not been re-roofed in 40 years. And so we started identifying those sites first. Next, we decided to prioritize the canopies because the canopies are immediately adjacent to all of these buildings. And I think it was going to seem really awkward if we re-roofed the building and the kids are walking down the hall and they're still getting, you know, water on them. So as a continuation of the building, I think it makes sense that we do the canopies at the same time. So going through the different priorities, we looked at each site for three components, the permanent buildings, the canopies, and the modular buildings. And so for priority one, we have sites like Escalona, Garden Hill, Lampton, Moffett, John Glenn, and Ramona. And for all of them, you'll see the number of buildings per site and the and that the canopies are included in that calculation. The number that you see after the school site is the estimate that we've received from our roofing consultant. And so that's how we use to calculate how many roofs we're recommending for re-roofing. So moving on to priority two, we are recommending Dulles, Eastwood, Edmondson, New River, Newfer, and Benton. And then priority three is Foster Road and La Pluma. We also took into consideration the site utilization for each of the school sites and, you know, the the population that it serves. Moving down to priority four, you'll see that all of these sites are canopies because the buildings were probably already done. And then priority number five are the modular buildings. A lot of these modular buildings were meant to be temporary. They're meant to be there probably five years. Some of these modular buildings have been there over 20 years. And so really, it's time, instead of re-roofing something that's not in great shape, it's really time for us to remove those or, you know, replace them if that's the case. So the priorities were put together, again, for re-roofing of the buildings that we have wood construction on. The canopies are made from wood slats or flanks that have steel posts. And the modular buildings are mostly metal roofs. And so this is an analysis of the report that we've received. So moving on to the recommendation. So the recommendation is that we proceed with sites, priority one sites, for estimated subtotal of 14.3 million. We proceed with priority two sites at an estimated $9 million. That's a total of $23.4 million. And so listed there in the project notes, you'll see the second bullet. We only have 18 million for Measure G. In an effort to just do as much work as we can and try and, you know, use other programs as as you braid funding for other programs also, we propose that we use the ELOP funds in the amount of 4.5 to give us that grand total for the 23.4. So again, 18 million Measure G, 5.4 from ELOP. So our goal is, we're going to have, once the sites are finalized, hopefully today, our roofing consultant will finalize the specifications for each individual school site based on those three components that I discussed. The goal is to go out to bid in January. So this work will take place in the summer. But we can't wait till June to go out to bid for a project in July because all the roofing contractors are already going to have projects lined up. So the advice that we received was go out to bid early. That will better guarantee you better subcontractors and better prices. And so we will be going out to bid in January. Contract award will be to numerous contractors. So we're going to request that all the contractors give us pricing per buildings, per canopies, and per modular buildings. And so, you know, we may have 10 different roofing contractors, which is fine because they may not be able to handle the capacity that we have listed here. We may have two or, you know, so it it leaves a lot, a lot of opportunity. Priority three, four, and five sites will be added if the bids come in lower. So let's say, for example, priority one sites come in at 10 million instead of 14. Priority two sites come in at 8 million instead of nine. Then we'll add priority three sites. And if we have funds available, we'll add priority four. So we just have to wait and see how the bids come in. Site logistics will be coordinated for each site. Again, the work is going to be scheduled over the summer. We understand there is summer school. Depending on the buildings, we will work with each of the contractors to delineate fencing, path of travel, work with the site. So if they do have summer school, maybe they can, you know, put all of the summer school classes in one building instead of multiple areas. So everything will be coordinated with the school sites. The other reason we want to go out to bid early is because we do want to do some preliminary work, such as demolition during spring break. Some of the demo in the canopies can be done during spring break. And then again, that way, when we start in the summer, it gives them more time to do the actual re-roofing. All re-roofing work to be scheduled summer 2026. And I just want to make a note that this does not include any sort of campus modernization or renovation. You know, the kids are going to leave and come back, and it's not like, it's not going to be like a renovation of the NPR where they're going to be able to see the new floor, see the new ceiling. They're going to come back and everything's going to look the same because all of the improvements were on the roof. So the perception there may be a little different. So this is how we would like to progress and move forward and focus on the the re-roofing projects. And here are some more photos of existing conditions. And I'm ready for any questions.
Really quick, Edith, I saw priority one for John Glenn High School. You only have the library and the lower gym and all canopies.
Correct.
So are all, so we're going to leave some buildings out then?
So I have my list here. Oh, gosh, I'm not even. John Glenn, the permanent buildings were re-roofed 17 years ago. So they don't fall within the high priority of the 30 and the 40 years. So that's why the permanent buildings are not included. It's only the gym that was, the library and the gym that were not done.
Also, can you explain to me how you came up with the 5.4 million from ELOP funds? Did you use the 70, 30? I mean, how did you figure out those numbers?
Correct. Fiscal advised that that is the percentage that they're using based on when the kids are in school and versus the ELOP. And correct, so we're being consistent, just like we did for the playground project. We are also using ELOP funds for the new playgrounds that we just completed. We did the 70, 30, so we are just following that recommendation from fiscal, using the same percentage.
Okay, and then there is no guarantee that those classrooms that are going to be, or the schools that are going to be receiving the work on Phase 1 and 2, there's no guarantee that those classrooms or those buildings will be used for ELOP next year?
So we do have a list of where all those ELOP programs are, and they vary from site to site. Sometimes they're in one classroom, sometimes they're in like 11 classrooms. So and for next year, I don't know what the the site has planned, but we have a list, we can compare it.
And some of those canopies that are from metal, are they all older than 20 years?
Yes. Yeah, they're 30 to 40, 40, 30, 40. Yeah, I have it on the list.
Okay, and so also, we approved 20 million, 18 million for the roofs, and then 2 million for the transportation tanks. So now we're going to add on 5.4 million to Phase 1. And last, last board meeting, a resolution to delegate authority to the superintendent for Phase 1 is now going to include 5.4 more million, a total of $25.4 million in there.
No, the resolution is only for Measure G, Measure G funds, Measure G projects.
But how are you going to, you know, separate the two if you're using all the funds for the roofs?
So we can start by using the Measure G funds and then maybe allocating the 5.4 for the last part of it.
And then on on Phase 1, all those roofs are older than 30 years?
Yes.
Okay, how many of those are older than 40 years?
Eastwood is 40 plus. And
But that's priority.
Sorry, I looked at the wrong column. I apologize. Yes, Eastwood, permanent buildings, 40 plus. Foster Road, 40 plus. Lampton, 40 plus, and Newfer, 40 plus years.
So so only Lampton is on Priority 1?
Correct.
Okay, shouldn't the the roofs that are 40 years or older on Priority 1?
Yes, so
Shouldn't they be there?
We took several different factors into consideration for the methodology and choosing them in the priority. And that had to do with the age of the roof, which is what we're discussing. But it also had to do with site utilization and enrollment. Some of these sites have very low enrollment, and they really don't occupy, need to occupy all of the sites and all of the buildings. So it doesn't make sense to go to a school site that maybe needs 10 classrooms in two buildings and then re-roof five buildings on site.
I would have liked to seen all those 40-year-old roofs on Priority 1 and just focus on Measure G funds without taking ELOP funds. That's what I would have liked, would like to see and wait the two to three years to be able to pull more bond money from there. I mean, we waited 30-plus years for the roofs to be done. We can wait another two to three years.
Yeah, and in two to three years, you know, everything continues to age, and so some of these may even increase. So in two years, Benton will go from 18 years to 20 years. And then there's going to start to be a priority.
Right, exactly, but what I'm saying is focus on the ones that are older so that we don't have to pull ELOP funds and just use the bond money. And when these, when when Phase 1E, you know, is projects are done, then we can pull another 20 million to work on the rest of the roofs remaining that need, because they're going to get done anyways, right? But there's, I mean, if we have 200 kids, they still need to be done at these school sites.
There is a great need, yes.
Mr. Yous?
Yeah, obviously, we're in a situation right now where we can tell how bad the roofs are. I know the last time we had some horrible situations where we had to move kids to some of our cafeterias or different things and different rooms to accommodate for students. Are we taking good notes right now? And actually, I know sometimes maybe checking off where those work orders have been waiting on for quite a while. where those work orders have been waiting on for quite a while, and, and knowing, and that could be a factor too of telling us which ones need to be done. Because, I mean, if any times right now, and you kept saying, you know, we're doing in the summer, we're doing in the summer, we'll be okay for next year. But this year, I mean, I think we're expected to have more days like this and more time, you know, and that, this is what I think we're going to be able to tell more. You know, sometimes a leak, you see it here, but it actually started on the other side. It's kind of weird the way leaks work. But I think we need to be very observant within the next few months and really see what, you know, what's really being affected, so.
And possibly readjust the priorities based on what we see in the next few months?
That's what I say.
Got it.
Also, I'm sorry, really quick. Dolores Huerta was on hold because we had no funds to complete, to begin the work. But now we have 5.4 million that we can actually pull from ELOP. So it's just a little frustrating that the board approved the beautification of Huerta in March earlier this year, but it hasn't started. I mean, there was some demolition in the classrooms, but really outside, there was a great need, but it was on hold because there was no funds. So I'm just really surprised that now we have 5.4 million to be utilized.
The beautification is moving forward. We are out to bid right now, and bids are due, I believe, next week. And so the goal is to bring the selected lowest responsible contractor back to the board on December 8.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. I really appreciate the work and, you know, the systematic way you've prioritized things. It's unfortunate that we are able to cover all of our permanent structures with priorities one, two, you know, four, and five are either modular or canopies, which aren't quite as pressing as your permanent structures. But then, you know, priority three is left hanging out there. It's unfortunate, we couldn't figure out a way to do those as well. Especially, you said one of those is a 40-year roof in priority three?
Yes.
Which one?
Foster Road.
Uh-huh. Yeah, anyway, other than that, that was just, I don't know, is there any thought on that, on those, when, where the source of funding might come from to address this?
You mean additional funding for more roofing?
Yeah, just wondering where you still have two permanent structures there that are schools with permanent buildings that...
Well, the hope again is that the bids come in lower than what is estimated so that we can add more projects.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
So can we wait, then, when those bids come in? And then also, as Mr. Reels had said, let's wait past this period and take a look at the priorities, what needs, what roofs really need it, so that we can make a better decision and obviously save those ELOP funds for what's really intended for? Okay, I mean, I know even at Dolores Huerta, we have a playground that was purchased and hasn't even been installed. So those, those are the kinds of things that I look at and are concerning to me. And this is why I don't want to touch ELOP funds for the roofs. I think we need to proceed with the work, with what's really, what those funds are intended for. And use our bond money exactly what it's intended for, and that's to, you know, improve our buildings. So I, I don't see, I don't see an issue with waiting two to three years to add more roofs to the list. We waited this long, and I think that the, our constituents would also appreciate that as well.
So we will, I just want to clarify that we will come back to the board. If these sites get approved today, again, we'll finish the specifications. We'll go out to bid in January. Bidding process usually takes three months. So the goal is by March of next year is to come back and present what general contractors have been selected for which site and for what scope, and with final numbers as to how much each roof is going to be. So that will come back to the board for approval.
Yeah, I just would like to add that on this recommendation, clearly we added 5.4 million dollars in the ELOP. So then the, on the action item, if, if the board feels compelled to remove the funding, then we just remove the funding. And we only do the, we only do the roofs that we total 80 million dollars, and then, and then we just move forward.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what we approved, approved, right? When we pulled that 20 million, 18 for the roofs and 2 million for the transportation tank. And I think that's what it needs to stay without pulling those ELOP funds.
Yes, from the bond. But this is not different than if I'm using different maintenance or another funding. I mean, again, we're just trying to be more proactive, and that's why this item is discussed in public. And then, but if the board agrees that we remove the recommendation, because this one is not even an action item, this is just a recommendation. Now, if you approve the, only the 80 million dollars, then we'll stick to 80 million dollars and we'll reduce the buildings that we need to do, and, and we just move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Meska?
I have a question. For the ELOP money, does it have a timeframe that we have to spend it? Or do we have, because that's important to know. If we have that money and we're not going to spend it?
No, most of the time, we can carry some monies. We sent this update last Friday, and then we can actually carry, carry this over, right? But, yes. But then, but then the idea was, again, if we can do, since we're going to be doing roofings, and some of those classrooms are providing ELOP instruction. So we're thinking it was a good idea, hence it was a recommendation to the board. And then again, if, if the board, if entire board feels compelled that we remove the recommendation, then we just take the action item, and then we just move forward.
I also, can I just also clarify? I understand, Mr. Reels, your concern about, let's wait and see how the buildings do with these rains that we're getting now and are scheduled to get. But if we delay, if the sites do not get approved today, and we wait a few months, it's going to delay our bidding process. And it's going to, we're not going to be able to do this work over the summer. So this is why it was so important to come to you today and show you the sites, show you the analysis, provide the recommendations and the priorities so we can kind of stay on schedule for next summer. If we delay it, then that means these roofs are going to get redone during the school year, which is going to be even more inconvenient for the kids. So thinking about the least impact to the site, the preferred time is in the summer. And so with this timeline, it'll allow us to, to proceed that way. Just like we, our plan was with the playgrounds. We started the playgrounds in the summer when there were less kids on site, because we needed to do demo and hauling things away. The roof is going to be, the re-roofing is going to impact the site just as much.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we save the, that's an important discussion. But I want to make sure it's under the action item. Right now, we're technically under a 7B, under the informational part. Any further, I'm sure a lot is going to overlap, as you can already tell. So any other information on here that you need us to know?
No, just that, you know, we're, we're just going to start at the top, and depending on how the bids come in, we are very cognizant of the 18 million, and we're not going to go beyond the 18 million. It's just now, after bidding, it's going to be a matter of where do I draw the line? Are we going to get with, for the 18 million, what priority one, priority two, priority three? And hopefully, maybe some priority four, but all of that will be presented back.
Sorry, and I just wanted to clarify the question that Ms. Free asked. So the delegation of authority that was granted last, last meeting would not, even if the 5.4 were approved to be added on to the 18, it does not apply to that? So if there's change orders, things like that, that would still require board approval if it's from ELOP money rather than from, from Measure G?
Correct, it would still require board approval, but we wouldn't be able to ratify anything without money.
Okay. But the only way to do that is maybe to have a clear distinction of we're done with Measure G.
Right.
And now, because if it's all mixed in, there's no way to say what...
Correct, so what we would do also, when we have all the final numbers, where we decide where we draw the line, and maybe we allocate certain sites for the ELOP, or we, well, we'll have to do a percentage maybe per site because they're at all the school sites. We can talk about it further.
And then, how does, how do change orders factor into this? You know, is the 18 million including, or have we approved 23.4, including, you know, change orders? Or is that, in other words, is that like our, kind of like our mental cap? That we bid low and hopefully that the change orders come up to that? Or is that the starting, and then it actually is the mean 25, 26 with the change orders?
The estimates listed for each site include soft costs and contingency. And so, because we are going to need to have an inspector. If we have multiple contractors, we're going to need a construction manager. So there are other expenses that we're going to need. So it's all been factored into these numbers, so.
So that's a hard cap?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful.
If I could talk about the resolution for a minute, I can give you an example that just came up a couple days ago. So for the playground project, they were fixing the irrigation, and they came across a transite pipe, an asbestos-containing pipe. And so we had to rush and get a proposal so that it can be removed safely. And so that resolution gives us the delegation to be able to approve that, so that work is completed right away. If we didn't have that delegation of authority, we would have to have the contractor give us a proposal, put it on the board agenda for December 8, and then wait until that's been approved and a PO has been issued for them to even do the work. So there's certain instances in construction where we come across these unforeseen's where we need to execute a change order right away or these additional services. You know, there's a couple irrigation lines that we hit at the playground projects, and we can't just have them shut off the water to the entire site for four weeks while I bring you an amendment to the board. So those are examples of where the resolution comes into play. We never go over the set amount that has been approved. We always stay within the project budget. But for paperwork-wise, it just allows us to work faster on the site and address these issues immediately.
That's very helpful, thank you.
All right, I think we're good on that one. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure I'll be back up in just a couple minutes with 9A. All right, can I get a motion on item nine?
I want to clarify something. Are we using ELOP funds then, including this, or we're not?
Just a second, that's under item nine. So we, we just need a motion in a second, then we can discuss it.
Okay, second, yeah.
Okay, now we can discuss. So go ahead.
So moving forward, I would like to just use the 18 million without the ELOP funds. I think we need to take a look at what we're, we're dealing with here without pulling the 5.4. I think it's also going to show transparency to our stakeholders as well, especially right now during these times that money is a big concern.
Could you explain the 70-30? I'm not sure what that meant. She referenced 70-30, she knows what it means, but I'm not sure I do.
Yeah, so for example, if we go back to the slide, oh, sorry. There is an estimated amount per site. So 70% of that would be funded by Measure G and 30% by the ELOP funds.
But if the resolution doesn't apply to ELOP, aren't you going to run into the same issues of, oh, now we got a broken pipe and we got to wait four weeks? Or is that...
We'll have to ask legal, I'm not sure about the ELOP funds, how, how that works.
Like, if we use it for, for, it's intended for programs like, you know, the chess club, things like that. If we use it for construction, there's going to inevitably be emergencies that can't wait for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I really don't think we should touch ELOP funds for this.
I think what you're seeing here is that the team is split-funding the project. So our goal is to make sure that we're able to get as many roofs done as possible. We do have ELOP programs in buildings that need roof repair. And, you know, we wouldn't be the only district split-funding using ELOP. We talked a little bit about a comparison between other districts. I can tell you right now that Downey uses their three, they charge a 3% through their education foundation from ELOP, and they're able to use that money, you know, as general fund to do certain work that, that they wouldn't ordinarily be able to do. And so oftentimes, when we, we have staffing who may play, you know, certain roles, you might use Title I funding because they're working under Title I guidelines for a percentage of their salary, and then you might use some other funding because they're also, I don't know, working in the McKinney-Ventle space, right? And so what you see the team trying to do is split-fund so that we can maximize the work. Heaven forbid, we have an incident in one of these ELOP classrooms, and keep in mind, we have increased the, by hundreds, the number of kids who are in the ELOP program. We have expanded significantly across 21 sites. So we have hundreds of kids in after-school programs every single day. And it is, we're being mindful of, hey, if these are used for ELOP programs, the funding does allow for a percentage of the dollars to be used in this way. And so we want to be able to exhaust the amount used from the bond. And in cases, when they get to that part of the project, that stuff is not covered under the resolution. It will in fact come to the board. The team is simply trying to maximize the number of roofs that impact the kids in our district. And so, again, we're not going to necessarily start with ELOP dollars, but we're looking, I'm looking for the authority for the team to be able to maximize the number of roofs that we're able to work on. And so that's what you see the team asking for at this point. Dr. V?
And I also want to minimize the interruptions to the, to the instruction. Yeah.
But that's why it's getting done in the summer.
Only if we meet these timelines. If she can't get this bid out, and it takes three months, there's no way she's going to be able to do the work in the summertime, and she's going to have to do it when kids are in buildings. And then we're talking about displacing kids in instructional time. So the timelines are real. These bidding processes are extensive. It's not a month, it's not a couple weeks, you said it's three months, right? And so if she doesn't have that authority to move, then now I'm looking at Buzz because he's going to be in a position where he's got to now figure out all these work orders when we have leaks and things going on. So again, this is a very proactive team with a great track record. I understand the transparency, but what they're trying to do here is be proactive. In the event we don't get approval, we completely understand. Mr. Santian has said, hey, we don't get the authority, we don't get the authority, and instructional time will be impacted, and we may have some incidents. We don't know, but the team is simply trying to say, I really want to be proactive. We're bringing information back to the board. We're going to start with the bond funding. We can work out the ELOP, but the resources will allow us to cover more of the priority list before we have incidents. Dr. V?
The, by not moving this forward now, approving this now, it's, as Dr. Baker and Edith mentioned that, then we would, it would interrupt teaching during the year. But also, is that there might be other situations that arise, like the one that you shared. On top of that, that will increase our risk for interrupting instruction again. Which with these old roofs and older buildings, it's very, it's predictable. I think are unpredictable, either way, like it's just, might probably happen. Murphy's Law.
Well, we've waited 20, 30 years for these roofs to be repaired. I, two to three years can wait for those that are not as older. So 30 years, so 40 years. We have some roofs that are 40 years old, okay, those need to be done. But I think we have a little bit of life on those that are 30. But I think we have a little bit of life on those that are 30, where we can wait two to three years to pull the next $20 million. So I know there's leaks, I totally understand that. And I know that we've had roofs done in the past where we've been able to do them in the summertime. I just would rather see us utilize the bond money to do what we said we're going to do without touching ELOP funds.
Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity to just speak really quick, Edith. I've got about 20 years here, and it's a great opportunity for the board to dedicate some money to the roofs because with bond money, we haven't really dedicated that much money to the roofs other than full modernizations, maybe at Benton and Corvallis. My history on a lot of these projects, I've been, like I said, I've been here 20 years. I've been involved in the management of handling these roofing projects for at least 15, but I've been very involved with this since I started here in 2005, so 2006 on. A lot of these roofs that we see at Garden Hill, Dulles, anything that has like a silver kind of cover to it, that's a 40-year roof on top of an existing roof. About two years ago, we were lucky enough or fortunate enough to move forward with several roofing projects, and our fiscal team understood that they could use some of the ELOP monies for it. And so, Eduardo and I and Alva, with our former superintendent and the people in charge of ELOP, worked through with them, and we were able to do about $6 million worth of roofing. That was kind of historic for me because I've never seen $6 million worth dedicated to our roofing projects in one summer. Historically, it's been, you know, $800,000 in a year for our deferred maintenance budget. So going back to those silver roofs, it's a 30-year roof on top of an existing gravel roof. The gravel has an edge to it, I'm getting a little too technical, but I want you to know that along that foil kind of, torched-down material is what it's called, that's laying on top, the edge is peeling back because it's 30 years old right now, the layer on top. So there's an existing layer, like you might see at your home, like you might have two or three layers of roofing on your house, and like you can't go any heavier than that. The issue we have is, you know, that edge is not necessarily in the classroom. So the water's getting into that area that's peeled back, that's holding the gravel, and it's getting under. So we have a lot of rot that's going on underneath that no one can see because it's covered with stucco. There were a couple of pictures here that you saw with, I think it was at Eastwood, where the stucco's off, and then you can kind of see the rot because the material underneath it is holding it. The breezeways. The thought about getting more roofing done because we didn't have as much money to work with, you know, 15 years ago, was to kind of ignore the breezeways. So the people in charge at the time did not do the breezeways so that we could do more of the physical buildings at John Glenn, I remember that one specifically. So a lot of the breezeways, you can walk through the campus, and if you're looking up at the lights under the canopies, every once in a while, you'll see what looks like water in the light fixtures. That's the stuff that, like, we really can't wait, like, three years on, on stuff like that. I understand, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to do all this work, because this is significant. But I just want you to understand, like, kind of what we're looking at with all the breezeways in the district, with the exception of Sanchez, which we did two years ago, Wait, which we did two years ago. There was no Wait Sanchez, there's probably one other one, Los Alisos. We did the entire campus two years ago when the roof blew off, you know. I mean, we had a strong wind in that layer of roofing that's on top of the gravel, you know, it's 30 years old. It had a heavy wind and a rainstorm, and it blew off. So I understand the inclination to kind of push back and wait and see how it goes, but we have been doing that, and we've been proactive on a number of things. Kind of like, we referenced work orders earlier. Some of the issues that we have is some of these work orders are projects. Like, we can go over and patch a bunch of stuff, but I mean, what's really needed is full replacement of like the breezeways and, and the, and the physical roofs. You'll see on the pictures, like, you'll see the deteriorated edges. You know, that's, that's the breezeways that are, that are breaking down, you know. And I just wanted to share that, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would that situation cause mold? That is definitely.
Yeah, there's, there's opportunity for growth in there. If there's, if there's any moisture that sits for a long period of time, usually we can see it or we can smell it, so we'll get a call about that. But if it's, if it's in an exterior kind of covered passageway that's like stucco or just outdoors, because you have, you have mold that's naturally occurring in the environment. So what you typically do is a sampling of the insides, the classroom space, to see what you have in there when you're doing a, an industrial hygienist comes out and does a test. But there is, there is that opportunity. It does cause growth.
Yeah, that's concerning. Okay, thank you.
Did you have that test done already on that school? And is that school on priority one list?
I haven't, I haven't had that recently with a roof. I've had, I've had some walls here and there that are being deteriorated because irrigation's like pointing in the wrong direction, and then no one knows about it until it's too late. So we bring in a remediation company anytime that happens. If we're talking remediation, along with the timeline for getting this done, is we do have to bring in a hazardous material expert to check certain areas of the roof and find any possibilities of lead or asbestos, and that would be addressed before the roofing demolition happens.
And what school did you say that was?
What, sorry?
Where, where the, you know, the.
The mold?
Yes.
We, it was a wall, and recently it was over at, like, suspect over at Nufer. So we brought in an abatement company, and then we had the, the wall stripped down and abated appropriately.
So why don't we move those types, those schools that are in high need to priority one?
I don't have that information because I don't have anything on, on mold on a roof right now.
So that's just an assumption.
The one I was talking about was a wall.
That's an assumption, yeah.
That was, that was a wall? And when it was an example to address Dr. V's question about mold, he's not saying that he has mold in roofs. He was just, she, her question was about, is mold a possibility when we have water? His answer is yes, here's an example, in a wall, not a roof. So just wanted to be clear about that.
And Nufer is on priority two. Because I call for the question.
Just a second, I just want to make sure.
It's 11:30.
Yeah, I understand, I just want to make sure everybody has a chance. Mr. Rios, do you have any comments on this? Ms. Langenwalter? Okay. Add one, one other question is the, does this include, because there are clearly walls that you walk along and you see huge black spots. Does the re-roofing include the structure underneath the roof that needs to be replaced? You know, mold on a wall, or is that separate? Is that too far down the rabbit hole?
Again, that would be considered more of a modernization scope of work, so no walls are included. But again, we do have contingency in the number. So if, like Buzz says, they remove the existing roof, and the sheathing underneath is mold or damage or wood rot, termite, whatever, I, there is some money set aside so that can get repaired, so the roof can be put back on. So only for the roof, nothing around it is part of the project.
And then my other question is, if we were to say 18 million only, do you have a clear mind as to, you know, which schools don't get in? Or would it still be, at the various schools, just whatever the most pressing buildings are versus a whole school site or not?
The way we have it priced out now is per school site, not per building, or like instructional or occupied building, so it's per site.
I know, my question is, if, what would be the consequence of an 18 million cap? Would that be cutting out schools, some schools altogether? Or some say, well, yes, but that school, this, this still needs to be done there, so we'll just, we won't do the, this building here that's not as commonly used or something?
Correct, when we come back in March after bidding, I can present that information. If you approve all five priorities, I can proceed to bid all of these projects. And then I can come back at the end of the bidding process and give you the actual numbers per site and show you where we get to the 18 million, show you where we get to maybe the 24 million, and then you will see what is left remaining. But, but those lines are going to fluctuate based on the bid. But for now, if I can put together bid packages for all of this is really what I'm, I'm looking for, so that we can at least see what the actual price is going to be.
And that would have been great to have a list of, if we only spend the 18 million, these are the schools.
Okay. Because we can look at that now, right now, again, but these are based on estimated costs. It would be priority one, that's already 14.3. If we only had another 3.8, that means we would only be able to do possibly two additional sites in priority two.
So Edith, it sounds like we're looking for authority to go to bid for this full amount. It has to come back to the board after that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that is what we're asking for, is to take what the team has estimated here, give them an opportunity to go out to bid, it comes back to the board, you get that level of detail about actual cost versus just their high-level estimates, and then we can go from there. Am I articulating that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's the request, so that she isn't delayed in going to bid because she, she doesn't take everything out, you don't have actual cost for this whole thing. And so it will be helpful for them to be able to move forward in that space with what they're asking for in terms of the amounts they have here. But she has to bring it, we have to bring it back to the board.
So at that, at that point, there would be another opportunity to revisit whether 18 versus 24.4?
Correct, I mean, at any point in time with the authority of the board, you can say, do these roofs, don't do those roofs. All we're saying is, we clearly have some situations going on. Wait, they did that one, but we had some roofs collapse and fall out. We got some deadlines going on. The team is just trying to be proactive, but at any point when you don't want us to do a roof, you vote, we don't do it. So I think we're just looking for the authority to go to bid and then bring it back. And then, what is that, January, February?
We'll start the bidding process in January and hopefully come back in March.
Okay. And this is on the timeline, because if she doesn't have things ready to go in summer, we're talking about moving kids to do roofs during the school year.
Because we'll come back in March, and then April during spring break. If we proceed, then they can start that preliminary demo. They'll be on hold until school's out, and then hit the ground running again for the summer. So yes, the recommendation is to select those sites and go out to bid.
And I'm pretty sure all school districts are trying to do roofs in the summer if they've got roof work. So roofers are gonna be, they're gonna be occupied. So we need to, you know, allow us to go through the process, and then you guys can decide, yes, no, yes, no, and then we have our summer projects laid out.
Okay. Ready?
I'd like to move, I'd like to make a motion to move it to 18 million only without the ELOP funds.
So to amend the, this? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead. No, you, if there's a motion to amend, that interrupts it. Just to be able to get clarity on this.
If the motion to amend is seconded.
That's correct, if it's seconded, that's correct. Do we have a second for the motion to amend to 18? All right, we have a motion and a second. So let's first vote on the motion to amend, and then, then proceed from there. All right, let's do a roll call.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Ms. Mesqua?
I'm going to go with my gut feeling.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
No.
Mr. Rios? Dr. Vedari?
No.
And Mr. Brassoff?
No.
Motion fails.
Now we'll proceed, we have a motion and a second for the general. Now let's get a roll call on that one.
Ms. Free?
No.
Ms. Mesqua?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes, to go out to bid on all that.
Mr. Rios?
No.
Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
And Dr. Brassoff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That brings us to item, the consent agenda, items 10, 11 through 13. And we need, um, before we have a motion and a second, believe we have a request to pull item 11. So, sorry, yeah, item 11, basically A. Any other requests to pull any items? Have any colleagues? Okay, so can I get a motion for?
A second?
Okay.
Okay. Can we get roll call?
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Ms. Mesqua?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios? Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
And Dr. Brassoff?
Yes.
Motion carries now for 11A. Can I get him, before we discuss it, can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Dr. Baker, I know that you explained to me with 11A, you explained to me the reasoning, but I want everyone here to be able to also hear the reasoning between why it's important and it's needed to, to, to vote on item 11A.
Sure, so this is an independent contractor agreement with Golden Star Technology for audiovisual upgrades in this room. In the past, we are live streaming, since I've been on board as your superintendent, the tech team was able to get us up and going pretty quickly. However, we have some glitches in our equipment. So there have been times when we've been presenting and someone will just go offline, or our microphones will have feedback, or we're having a hard time with people hearing. And so this is a contract, and I'll turn it over to Eduardo to talk a little bit more. But this is an opportunity for us to, in the spirit of transparency, to make sure we have the equipment that allows us to do that. Because a lot of times if we're going offline for a second, or there's feedback, you know, folks may think that's intentional, but it's been our equipment. The tech team has been phenomenal at getting us to live stream, and we want to continue to do that. We actually have more people watching our board meetings now than we have in recent years because they have access to the technology working. But sometimes it goes out and we have a hard time being heard. Mr. Santian?
So as Dr. Baker indicated, so there is basically quite a few parts that are broken, and this contract will allow us to replace those parts and to upgrade the whole system because all of us, all of us, including clearly all of you, have been experiencing these issues kind of for the last few months. And then, we talked about this item in my department from before, but then, now we're reaching the point that we need to replace some parts in order to fix the system, but we need this contract.
What is the budget source for this?
It comes from the technology department.
I know that a couple of years ago, we discussed this, and we knew it was going to cost money. And that was one of the reasons we stopped, and we kept on saying, we're going to get it going. We didn't get it going. This is where we're at now, and we really need to make sure that we move with technology. We've had people call in, and we can't even hear them.
Right.
Are you saying we're replacing it, we're upgrading, or just repainting some parts?
We just replaced some parts, and we're upgrading some of the items included on this description. And then we're making sure, excited with examples that the two members were discussing, when somebody calls in, that they actually come through, and that all the microphones are working because quite a few times, some of you were speaking, and the microphone will die. And then there's some connections over here to the main equipment over here. And then, sometimes we're going live YouTube, and then the transmission stops. So we're trying to fix all those little problems.
How long have we had this equipment? It seems like archaic.
The, I'd say probably five, seven years. This one is a wild guess. We did it around the same time when we improved this room. You know, the new carpet, the dials, the chairs, it was around that time.
Yeah, for technology, lifespan is like shorter.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's also a maintenance plan, correct?
And, and the maintenance agreement is included for the next three years. So if something goes wrong in the next three years, at least we have full support that they can come back, fix it, make it up and running, especially before the board meeting. make it up and running, especially before the board meeting.
So did we go out and, did we look at other companies? Or was there other bids?
You know, that I don't know, Mr. Rios. So I really don't know if we have another quote on this. But then the, yeah, I really don't know if we had two or three different quotes. But then some of this equipment, not everybody serves the same equipment, but I really don't know that piece.
Thank you.
Is Andrew here to answer a couple of questions?
He's not here today.
$43,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah, it's for three years, it's for equipment and a lot of replacements. And then, and then it's to make the system up and running the way that it was designed to be.
I would have liked to have seen some bids as well to see if there was a lower cost somewhere. I mean, because it's just a lot of money. And we just got new cameras three years ago, you said?
No, this system, I'm sorry. No, this system was probably put in place five, seven years ago. I'm almost sure. We did it at the same time.
So we're just going to ask if we can continue with the board meeting with Mr. Santian explaining his perspective on the cameras and what's kind of taking place. So just want to make sure you're able to hear Mr. Santian continue, please.
No, I was speaking about when the system was put in place. I think it was between five and seven years.
Okay. And again, this is one of those concerns where, again, since we've been live streaming, we have had some trouble. We've had a couple of times, we can't get people online who are waiting for comments. We've had our YouTube go out where we, you know, can't livestream and so forth. And so there is a problem with our technology in the space. So this is an opportunity for us to do those upgrades. You all have apparently discussed this in the past. We do have our chief technology officer who was out this today. Hence, we have some other folks helping us during the study session, so thank you for that. But we're, again, you see the team trying to address a concern that you all are experiencing here as you, as we have meetings. So that's, that's all that this is. But again, a vote is helpful. If it's approved, we move forward. If it's not, you know, we'll go next steps, but we will continue having the trouble, the tech trouble that we have currently. And I know we weren't live streaming prior to me coming on board, but we're able to do that. But there are a lot of glitches with it. And part of it is people will be presenting and then whole parts will just be cut out from the online version. And so there are some concerns there. Technology's very different. They're doing upgrades constantly. So not upgrading means that, you know, you're going to have some maintenance issues. So that's all, no harm, no foul. You know, if we could get a vote, that would be great. If not, we'll figure it out.
So just two quick things. One is the, just today, like after the public comments, the person that was waiting over an hour to get in emailed us saying, I was there. I just, I couldn't get in. So she emailed us what she was going to say. I felt bad for her. She, you know, at least, I'm not sure what happened, but maybe from her perspective, it didn't show up on our end. But she's like, I was there waiting and I never was able to get in. So we experienced this tonight. But from the perspective of public accountability and transparency, the answer may be yes, we just don't know. You know, is this the kind of thing that requires a bid? We just want to make sure there's transparency to this or does somebody just pick, I like that company, let's go with them?
You know, it does not. And then the transparency piece is happening right now because we're in public, we're discussing it. And, but I completely understand the question.
Well, in terms of how this company was chosen?
Well, no, no, that's what I was saying on the transparency because I just answered, and I mean, I really don't know if the department got one or two or three quotes. Okay, that I didn't know. And then if it doesn't concern, I mean, we can actually pull it and then bring it back, I mean, next time. And then we'll show you, you know, if the department actually called two or three, two, three different places.
Typically, what we would do whenever you're selecting a vendor is you're going to have two or three quotes, right? And so again, it would be following up with Andrew to say, hey, just give us the other quotes that you had. And we could very well do that. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight and it was a misstep for us to not have that information. I didn't realize this was going to be... I mean, I knew we were going to talk about it, but I didn't know that you wanted to know what the other quotes were. We don't typically bring all the quotes, we just bring the contracts. So all of the ELOP, we didn't bring you the multiple quotes for those items. We just brought you the vendors for that. So this is very similar, but yeah, that's where we are.
The numerical value of the quotes is what's being requested, but the fact that there was a process versus, I like that company. I think that's, I think that's the issue. And very likely there was, if that's a standard protocol. I just, we don't have the answer.
One thing that, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but I know when we went to live streaming, I think the cameras that we have are new because we weren't being recorded before. So at least we want to make sure the quote does not include new cameras. I don't know how closely the quote, the people, the contractors looked. But I, so for that reason, I would like to delay it, actually. It'd be interesting to see what the breakdown is for the service contract as opposed to the materials, too. Not that I'm not in favor, I just would like a little more information.
So would you like to make a motion to table?
Yes.
I have a motion that we table this item.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Can we get a roll call on that motion?
Yes. Ms. Mescola?
Yes, but I'm hoping that we could get it into the next board meeting.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios? Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Yes.
And Dr. Brassoff?